How are you?
Good. How about you?
Well, I'm fine. Sorry, me too. No idea what I was gonna do that today. You know, but celebrate. Go ahead and return it, you know, because that's the last day I have to have. Um, I am. We'll check and see. Go ahead, April. Go ahead and say I will, and then we'll.
I don't know.
Thanks, I was gonna do that today. My son won five, and he hasn't been signing all day. Are we getting anything? Have you had some ideas? Yes, yes. Not yet. We're not going to. Yes, ma'am.
I've lost practice time because I've been digging. Well. I understand that, I understand that. Yeah, well, that could be true, because I know. And, and it just depends on, on the direction of the seat as, which direction. Oh, my. Perfectly fine, so we can say. It's for the first. And then the [inaudible]. For the evening. Yeah. I don't have a dog in my life. Very cute. They're next to the [inaudible]. It's pretty amazing. I, I don't think I typically move. Don't come back to me. I learned a little piece. See, these are, these, you know, these are the, the, I don't remember. I don't see. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, yeah, that's one more. That's good, see, you got good memory. Oh, yeah. It's amazing you think. I feel good.
Yeah. You know, I really only know about the first one. I, I don't have such a foundation on the ground. You know, my cousin, my cousin, my cousin, my cousin, my cousin. I don't, I, you know, I don't know. It is really, the draft. Yeah. Yeah. She is one of our best. Yeah, you can play. Did I go see the five? Oh, yeah. They just sort of, they just remember the. I know. I played it before I received the first round. I think, you know, when they, they lost Jeremy. I'm right. A lot of people thought it was. I can read it.
I would have stayed with me if I was invited to see it for free. Yeah. The emphasis was on defense.
Yeah. And that's, that's true. You don't know.
We'll know in five years.
Right, right.
I didn't pay, I paid a hundred bucks to see the fight. I know what things are gonna be looking like.
Right. You should have asked. I just like it before the horrible race.
Oh, yeah. It's like playing the stock market. You're gonna see another bar next to me.
Yeah, he's a two-story, bunch of badly downed, like, [inaudible]. All the [inaudible] were all [inaudible]. They were all [inaudible]. He spent the whole summer handicapping horse races. So he come back, you know, like, the first day before classes started, went out for lunch somewhere. Full season, a lot of them, he had seventeen thousand dollars he had won over the summer. So I said, well, you buy him lunch, that's for sure. But, you know, but, you know, after I moved here, I was riding out somewhere, out where they have all those irrigation ditches. Calls me, begging me for money, you know. I mean, he was saying he had some problem, you know, I forget what it was, his brother-in-law in the Philippines, and he needed money. I mean, and I was trying to pay attention to him, and I backed right into one of those irrigation ditches. You know, that's what it is, right? You know?
Yeah.
He probably lost it all. He lost, yeah.
Hi, Maria. Hi. Madam President, how are you this afternoon?
Oh, just, just great. If, if, I need to stop answering phone calls, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I.
Two hours before.
Ma'am, I understand your challenge.
With elementary school. Oh, yeah. Did you play Little League together? His dad's a [inaudible].
That's the draft, that letter that you asked me to prepare. It's just you and the board members. I don't know if you wanted to have to think about it. Remember you said we'd write one that maybe other boards might also do?
Yeah, I grew up with the whole family. Three or four friends from us. I lived off of local, near University Hills. I went to University Hills after my building. I was a charter member of University Hills, fourth grade.
Oh, really?
We were one of the last houses in the Bronx.
I will call this meeting to order because they're waiting for us, so.
Is your mic on, ma'am?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's not sounding.
It's not sounding.
I'm calling this meeting to order. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit late. I need to stop answering the phone at a certain time, and then, and then we're ready to go. Ms. Hall, will you please take?
Ms. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Yep.
Mr. Castro.
Here.
I'm here, you're here, we're here.
Thank you. And we have some entertainment today for Cinco de Mayo.
We do, that's correct, and I don't have the information on this, I think.
Mr. Castro, would you like?
Mr. Castro, I believe this is your introduction, sir.
Yes, we're fortunate to have the likes of Mr. Robert Bobby Trevino, known for many, many years, and he's one heck of a musician, and you'll agree with me when you hear. Cogedda, Bobby.
How many is he going to?
[Music] 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 [Music]
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Robert. That'll get us into the spirit of Cinco de Mayo.
All right, thank you so much.
It's a good way to start a meeting, thank you. Okay, we're going to the agenda, and, and looking over the agenda, I would like to remove B3, the report only, on the LEAP program. I want to table the report, but have the discussion. So, do I just need to make a motion?
Madam President, to be in order, you'll need.
Yeah, you have, you're gonna change it.
A motion by the board and.
Yeah, we have to have a motion.
Okay, so I make a motion.
Or you ask for a motion.
Okay, I am asking for a motion to remove B3 report only, leaving the discussion on the LEAP program.
So moved.
A second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And Madam President, in your materials, just for the board's edification, is the presentation we had anticipated making today?
Yes, and I never actually saw it. I started to open it, and, and then I saw like the first page and did not have.
And it's in your materials, ma'am.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now I go back to, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Madam President, can I make one recommendation?
Yes.
Just, I'm sorry. Because of persons we have here, children and otherwise.
Yes.
You already, you had already scheduled the Montevista Elementary School television broadcast under item 2A1. The board might want to contemplate also moving item 3B1, methods and learning kinesthetically video presentation, and do that as a package?
We can do that, we can amend it.
So that would put it as.
Okay.
Following 2A1?
Okay, I didn't realize there were children for that program as well.
There aren't?
No.
Okay, they're not. So Madam President, whatever the board.
We'll just leave it as is then.
As is.
Okay, so then I go back to a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I so moved.
Okay.
Second, I thought we already did that.
Well, no, we, we, he had a suggestion, so. And now, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda is amended as, as stated. We now move for the, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. 3A1 budget adjustments, and that's what I was talking to Mr. Dean about just even as I was coming in here. I need a motion, all right? I make the motion, I need a.
Oh, you don't.
Yes.
We make the motion.
Okay, go ahead. Make a motion, please.
I so moved.
Okay, and, okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So now that takes us to the superintendent's report, and you have something to say.
Madam President, thank you so much. First of all, we have, I'd like to remind all of us present that, you know, the backbone of our business are our teachers, and this happens to be National Teachers Week. And so I thought, in honor of the teachers both present, and those that have worked for us all day today with our kids, we, as a board and administration, might give them a round of applause. Shall we do that? Madam President, we have, I believe, one of the finest staffs anywhere, but especially in the state of New Mexico, and so thank you for that. And I want to add my congratulations to our teachers, and we certainly appreciate your efforts, and our community is better for your care and your love of our, of our students. So thank you for the work you do. Madam President, under item 2A1, we have a presentation with Ms. Teresa Jones and others from Montevista Elementary regarding their school television broadcasting presentation. And we had an opportunity to see this earlier this week, and you're in for a treat.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Cecily Luhon Pinkum, and I'm the Technology Integration Specialist, and I'm part of the broadcast. Montevista TV, or MBTV is what we like to call our crew, delivers.
There we go, there we go, thank you.
Oh, I should know that, I'm so short. I should know this. We are an MBTV crew that we deliver the morning announcements. This ten-to-twelve-minute daily live production includes things like, not only the school menu or the mission statement, but the students go above and beyond and do the seven habits that we do. They do National Hispanic Heritage Month, Black History Month, and they do so much research when they're doing this. I have fifteen to twenty students in grades three through five, and they apply for the positions, they interview for the positions of director, anchor, reporters, audio engineers, production assistants, and camera operators. So they simulate a real live TV broadcast station. They volunteer to do this by coming every morning at 7:30 in the morning, and they come one day after school. So this is above and beyond for any student as it is. What they do is they participate in the entire broadcast process. They research, they brainstorm, they script-write, they do animation, they do video productions. They did an anti-bullying video for Red Ribbon Week, they do music videos and animation. The most important outcome of MBTV, though, is it's such an important communication link to our school. And every morning, this energizing, positive climate is what starts our Montevista Elementary School every single day. Errors with everything just as it is, and we do a live production every single day. I want to very quickly recognize them. They're here with us, I have almost all of them here, and I'll do this very, very quickly, because it is such an incredible, amazing, hard-working, above-and-beyond group. I'll start with Chris Maraz, he does, please stand. He is, if you can just hold your applause till the end, and I'm just gonna go quickly. He's our animation coordinator, he's also an anchor. Isaiah Carr, you'll probably see him, he's an anchor, he does research, teleprompting, he wears many hats, he's one of our fifth graders. Yanelli is our production assistant, she also is our camera operator. Production assistant is huge, it does so many jobs. Angelie is not only in animation, she does our entire coordination for our music, so she is an incredible music coordinator. And our next person is Lauren Ballard, and she has been with me since third grade, she is our director. Now, this person has, knows every single job, she can take every single job, and she also has that personality and drive that keeps our whole team working and functioning as a team. She's incredible. Our next one is Maddie Danner, she's a third grader, and she is an anchor. She does our music, she does teleprompting, audio, they wear many hats. Nicole is the same way, Nicole Alanis, and she is an anchor and animator, and she does video production also. Our next one is Deja, she is an anchor, she does teleprompting, she does research, she does brain breaks. Thank you. And Diego, I'm so sorry, Diego Almanzar, thank you for remembering that. Diego is a third grader, and he is my techie. He is the one that does the switcher, so he understands the tricaster and switching from one camera to another camera, and without him, we cannot do a live broadcast. So he is Mr. Techie in the making. And we have Alice Shields, and she is my animation coordinator. So she is the one that trains everyone else for the animation. She's a third grader. In the back row, I have Cynthia, who is an anchor, she also helps with our music selection. We have Zoe Davidson. Zoe Davidson also wears a few hats, she is an anchor, she does teleprompting, and she is now doing animation. And Boston Ross, Boston Ross is our assistant director, he's an anchor, he does audio engineering, and he also is one of our switchers, big techie and wears many hats.
Ms. Pinkum?
And one last one, it is.
Could you have them all come up?
Pardon me?
So parents can take them?
Oh, yes, absolutely. And our last, and but not least, is Cameron Anderson. Cameron Anderson is, wears many hats, but she is our audio engineer coordinator.
All righty. Yeah.
Boys and girls, you want to come to the front?
So your parents can take pictures.
So your parents can take pictures. And while the students are coming up to the front, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank, first of all, the parents that are here. They are here and brought their kiddos, but they deliver these kiddos to us every single morning at 7:30. So if you're parents, would you please raise your hand? There you go. Amazing, they do an amazing job getting these kids there. Secondly, I'd like to recognize Cecilia Luhon Pinkum for the amazing job that she does every day with these kiddos. We couldn't have done it without her, so we're real excited about it. She's done a quality, quality job. And last but not least, these amazing wolf pups that stand before you. They're true learners and leaders at our building.
Okay, everybody, smile. We do couple here. Whoa, where's Ms. Jones?
Ms. Jones.
We're good.
You're good? Ms. Pinkum, come on up. Yeah. Didn't work, huh?
We'll look at the pictures. Lauren, we'll do another one. Parents, go ahead.
Yeah, come on up if you'd like. Stay there, guys. You can't run down, Ms. Pinkums are gonna run away, but not you.
We're gonna watch the video?
And then we have a video, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead and go through it. Thank you.
Thank you, all right, right away. Now, Bill, you might cue the video up, and let's all enjoy.
Good afternoon, Los Cruces Public Schools Air School Board Leaders. Today is Tuesday, May 5th, 2015. I am Boston.
And I'm Isaiah, reporting from the MBTV studios at Montevista Elementary. We are a district with the mission. Tonight, we will begin with our district mission statement. The Los Cruces Public Schools, in partnership with students, families, and the community, provides a student-centered learning environment that cultivates character, fosters academic excellence, and embraces diversity. We would like to say welcome from our school board members. Ms. Maria Flores, Mr. Chuck Davis, Ms. Barbara Hall, Mr. Maury Castro, and Mr. Ed Frank. Each day, our MBTV crew of twenty students made up of third, fourth, and fifth graders provide ten-to-twelve-minute broadcasts that not only brings our students our school mission, menu, and weather, but we try to share new information on a daily basis. We are a leader in this school, so each day, we talk about one of the seven habits by Stephen Covey, and remind students how to strive to be leaders and learners by practicing each of the seven habits. This week, we are reviewing habit number one, be proactive. In addition to video stories, we create animations for our broadcasts. This animation is on being proactive. Habit number one, be proactive, you're in charge. To me, be proactive means to be in charge of yourself. That's right. I make good choices, I choose to follow the rules. I choose my actions, attitudes, and moods, you should too. Today, I choose to be happy. I do not blame others for my wrong actions, I take responsibility for my choices. So being proactive means to be in charge of yourself. Make good choices, even when no one is looking. So Wolfpack, be proactive today. We also have national theme weeks, such as Black History Month, or Hispanic Heritage Month, Dr. Seuss Week, or National Library Week. We also can have Today in History. Today in History, it is Cinco de Mayo. This is a Mexican holiday full of history and Mexican pride. This day celebrates the Mexican Army's astonishing victory over the French troops that took place on May 5th, 1862. The Mexican Army was greatly outnumbered by the French, who had not lost a battle in over fifty years. Those about six thousand French soldiers, and less than one thousand one Mexican soldiers, or rather, farmers. On May 5th, General Zaragoza. On May 5th, General Zaragoza and his troops surprised the French and attacked them in a small village of Puebla, Mexico. This was such a surprise victory for the Mexican Army. On September 16th, 1862, President Juarez declared that the date of the Battle of Puebla would be made an annual holiday. So, Cinco de Mayo became a popular holiday in Mexico. It has also been a special day in the southwest of, in America. In the United States, Cinco de Mayo is celebrated with parties or fiestas with friends and family. The colors of the Mexican flag, red, white, and green, often appear in costumes and party decorations. People decorate for Cinco de Mayo with balloons, streamers, and flowers. Mariachi bands or other Mexican folk music is also played at these celebrations, and there is often traditional Mexican dancing. And of course, the best is the Mexican food. Monsieur just celebrated Cinco de Mayo last Saturday and Sunday. Let us take a moment to say the pledge of allegiance. Would all of you please stand and join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Our broadcast always ends with a reminder to our Wolf Pack to be leaders, our annual slogan, and some music to begin our day. Our daily music is also a learning experience. On Mondays, we have Classical Music Monday. Cultural music. Tuesday is music from around the world. Wednesday is Disney Day or DJ Day with special requests by students or teachers. Thursday is Oldies But Goodies Day, and Friday is our Brain Break Day, where we ask students to get up and get moving with some type of student dance music. We always invite each class throughout the year to participate. We even have guest appearances by our teachers. By ending with music, we begin our school day on a positive note. Today's music is in honor of Cinco de Mayo, Somos como las flores, which means "We are like flowers," is being sung by our first graders. Then back to our school board president, Ms. Maria Flores. For now, we would like to say thank you for allowing us to share how Montevista Elementary begins each day. So honorable school board members, be great leaders today. Make great choices. This is Boston. And this is Isaiah. For MVTV, remember to be awesome today.
Thank you for bringing your students. That was quite a treat. We have celebrated Cinco de Mayo properly today. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, we have for this evening discussion of graduation credit requirements. I've asked Dr. Sanchez to present this to you. Let me just lay the backdrop for this. As we have looked at our, from the state, that our graduation rate had apparently fallen slightly from 70% to about 68%. We knew that was wrong. And so with Mr. Hand's, Dr. Sanchez's, and others' help, we petitioned the state to recompute. And yesterday, we received the new computation. I'm delighted to tell you that our graduation rate is now 77%. And so we need to give a round of applause to all of our teachers and coaches who do that. Now, 77% is a full 8% higher than the state average, is higher than the Albuquerque Public School, who is at 62%. So we can be very proud for how we're doing. But nonetheless, as we look at the pressures of education, as you look at our instructional package, one of the things that we think is appropriate for review is our graduation requirements as a district. So if I may defer to Dr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Madam President, members of the board, I asked Dr. Wendy Miller Tomlinson to come forward and provide a brief overview. Basically, we did some research. We looked at national, some states went as far up as Massachusetts, far north is Massachusetts, or east is Massachusetts, and looked at California, Colorado, but also districts. And we're going to find that, from the research that we did, that, Dr. Wendy is going to present to you, that we are perhaps, in the state of New Mexico, the only district that currently requires 29 units for graduation. The next district that comes close to us is Bolin Public Schools, with 28. And the rest, Dr. Wendy will explain to you. We do have a summary of all of this information, which I will email to the board, because I know we inundate you with paper, but I'll email that to you at home so you can study it. Dr. Miller Tomlinson.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Rounds, as Dr. Sanchez mentioned, we did some research to see how our graduation requirements in LCPS align to our neighboring school districts, school districts across the state, and what are school districts in other parts of the country doing? And it was really interesting. So in the Los Cruces Public Schools, we currently require 29 credits for graduation, and that policy was adopted in, for the 1996-97 school year with the implementation of the four-by-four block schedule. So it's been in place, that graduation requirement has been in place for some time. Currently, the state of New Mexico requires 24 credits for graduation, starting with the class of 2017, which are the sophomores today. It'll be 24 and a half with the addition of a half credit of health that is now requirement, required for those students. So 29 credits in LCPS, 24 and a half for the state, and our neighboring school districts. So we looked at Alamogordo High School currently requires 26 credits. Gadsden requires 26 credits. Deming currently requires 27. Starting next year, that will go down to 26. Other parts of the state, state range from 24 in Santa Fe to 26, 25 in Portales, 24 in Hatch. So there's a range between, right with the state requirements at 24, ranging up to 26, was pretty consistent. And I think that looking at this is timely, looking at not just graduation rates, but opportunities for students, and what makes sense to provide students adequate opportunities that we're not requiring too much, but we're, you know, we're requiring enough so they can take advantage of the many opportunities that we have in the district in high school. I thought it was interesting, in Arizona, they require 22 credits, Massachusetts 22, North Carolina 22. And interestingly, in California, districts are statutorily allowed to set their own graduation requirements, which we don't have that option, but it's interesting to think about. So I will stand for any questions you might have.
Do any of the board members have any questions for Ms. Tomlinson or comments in regards to the graduation requirements?
Are we going to get a report on the email?
Well, I think Dr. Sanchez is going to send us something.
I'll email that report. I could also print a report if any board member would like to carry at home with them. I'd be happy to do that.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just wondering, you know, what, you know, the impact might be on this, you know, improving the graduation rate. Is there any speculation on that matter?
Well, I think if we require less credits, obviously, students should be able to attain fewer credits. It also is dependent on the scheduling. And, you know, currently, we offer eight credits per day, or, I'm sorry, eight credits per year, so students have the opportunity, so, to earn up to 32 credits. You know, they're required 29, so there's a little bit of wiggle room in there. As we look at a number of things, really instructionally, what's best for students, then we start looking at, is the block scheduled the best instructionally for students? We have a blended block where we offer year-long and block courses. So I think as we start examining how students are doing in the various types of classes, I believe that will help us make our decision.
Anyone else have any comments? The reason that it occurred to me to bring up this discussion, and the reason for my doing so, is to look at what obstacles there might be for our students, some of those that are less high-achieving than others. And I thought that 29 credits could be daunting for some of our students. And I've talked to two teachers and parents, well, both are teachers and parents of students, and they did not favor this because they thought that their students were doing so well and were using up all their credits. Well, I remember, in my particular case, my daughter was finished in junior year. She was done. But, you know, she stayed another year and took all classes that she wanted to take that she wasn't able to take up till that time, and then enjoyed another year of high school. So if anyone in the community has, I know that some of the principals are here from the high schools, it would be nice to hear from the students, from the parents, and to kind of field an inquiry, perhaps, to see how they feel, and maybe we can look at it not for this coming year, but for the following year. And maybe we don't want to go as low as 24, but 26 would be a reasonable amount, perhaps. And, you know, for our overachieving students, just like I told these mothers, I said, the students can take as many credits as they want, and they can go into dual credit, and so many of our students are already doing that, so it won't inhibit what they're doing. And it'll help those that are on the lower spectrum to maybe achieve that diploma. And that was my reason. I don't know if anyone has any comments otherwise from that. But let's continue to explore this, and let's explore it with our, with our students and with our parents and teachers as well, if we can. Okay?
Madam President, one of the things we might want to contemplate is, as a follow-on, Dr. Miller Tomlinson could perhaps give us what a transition might look like. I know that at the high schools, they're working on a blended schedule sort of model upcoming, and there may be some thoughts that are coming out of that. And so I think that might be a reasonable next step, is a report to the board, if that would please the board.
Okay. That would be fine with me. And also, maybe we need to look at how many students are, are not making it, that are, that could, would graduate if we moved it down to 26, if we had some numbers.
Madam President, what we might do is look at our graduation rate I just reported, looking at the other 23% of the students, and profile that, perhaps.
That would be good.
As far as the time.
Especially now, right now would be a good time to look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
And just for the information of everyone, we have started looking at those students that don't persist to graduation, because there's two distinct groups. There's students that don't graduate with their cohort, so we don't get to count them as graduating, and then there's students that drop out and never really get on, you know, gain traction as far as earning credit. So we're looking at those, and we're really examining subpopulations within those two distinct groups to see what factors play in, where those factors start to play in. So hopefully, we'll have more information for the board soon.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
Do we have a question? Would we be phasing this in? We would do these with, up to the, starting with the sophomores, and then the juniors and seniors, and just finish out with?
Correct. Madam President, Mr. Davis, if we were to reduce credit requirements, it would have to be a phase-in, and I believe that's the transition plan that we would have to look at. How would we phase this in so it doesn't have an impact on students currently in high school? And how do we make that a smooth transition as students are coming in, as students are coming into high school?
And I would imagine, Ms. Tomlinson, that it would be for freshmen of that year. We wouldn't, we wouldn't even impose it.
Madam President, that's why I asked for the transition plan. I think there are a couple of options about how we might proceed. It's like when you go to college and you enter under a particular catalog. It's the same kind of questions that rise here, and perhaps we could do some thoughtful presentation about some of the options that are there. More likely than not, it would affect an incoming freshman class as it moves forward in time.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, that moves us to item 2A3, Safe Routes to School presentation. This evening, I'd like to introduce Ashley Curry and Todd Gregory. Now, you've seen them before, and Ashley brought some other folks with her. I'm sorry, you'll get to introduce them for me if you would, please. And of course, this is in our Safe Routes to School.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Rounds, thank you very much for having us here today. It's an honor to be able to present to you an update on our Safe Routes to School program this year. We've had a lot of exciting things happen. I'm going to just start by introducing our team. We have Todd Gregory here. He's the Safety and Security Coordinator. And the Safe Routes to School Coordinator, Diane Navarres, is one of our champions. Annalisa Grishalva is one of our champions. Dawn Sanchez is a very important part of our program. She's from the Department of Health. We also have school stipend positions, and we have a Safe Routes to School Coalition, which is a group of about 15 people from around the city, the school district, and community members who help guide our, guide our program. The five Es, some of you may not be familiar with Safe Routes to School, so just very briefly, I'll give you a history and the backbone of our program. The five Es are education, encouragement, engineering, enforcement, and evaluation. The program started in 2006 at Hillrise Elementary with some Department of Transportation funds. 2007, Camina Real joined on, again with Department of Transportation.
It's an honor to be able to present to you an update on our Safe Roots to School program this year. We've had a lot of exciting things happen. I'm going to just start by introducing our team. We have Todd Gregory here, he's the Safety and Security Coordinator. And the Safe Roots to School Coordinator, Diane Navarres, is one of our champions. Annalisa Grisalva is one of our champions. Dawn Sanchez is a very important part of our program, she's from the Department of Health. We also have school stipend positions, and we have a Safe Roots to School Coalition, which is a group of about 15 people from around the city, the school district, and community members who help guide our program. The five E's, some of you may not be familiar with Safe Roots to School, so just very briefly, I'll give you a history and the backbone of our program. The five E's are education, encouragement, engineering, enforcement, and evaluation. The program started in 2006 at Hillrise Elementary with some Department of Transportation funds. 2007, Camina Real joined on, again with Department of Transportation funds. Masiya Elementary received a grant from Department of Transportation funds in 2007 and continued that funding through 2013. In 2013, the Department of Transportation gave us money from a grant that they have to be able to hire on our champions and our stipend positions. And just last fall, the Safe Roots to School Coordinator position moved to being district-wide, and that funding goes through 2018 from Department of Transportation funds. There's just, I'm going to start with just our, the biggest accomplishment this year, one of our really most noticeable accomplishments this year, is our infrastructure improvements. So that's just the map of the school district with the schools. And we had the opportunity to, I think I might have skipped a slide back there, sorry, yes. So we had $500,000 that was given to us. In fact, $250,000 of that came from Albuquerque, who didn't use the money, and they saw that we were doing good things down in Los Cruces. So they gave us Albuquerque's money, and we had a total of $500,000 to put towards improvements at 10 schools, elementary and middle schools. We did signage improvements, sidewalk and crosswalk improvements, ADA compliant ramps, curb extensions, and bike racks. So I'm going to not bore you with too many details of slides, but just as a visual, you can see some of the improvements that we've made around the district, really that started this, over the summer, and ended, and ended, we've just done final inspections for them. So Alameda Elementary, you can see crosswalk improvements, ADA ramps, nice curb cuts at Booker T., new sidewalks at Homosa, and all around Homosa, they received many improvements. Hornada Elementary had no sidewalk at the back of the school on the east side, now has a beautiful sidewalk that connects two pre-existing sidewalks. This is MacArthur on Valley Drive, just more curb cuts and ADA compliance, you can see the new crosswalks painted there, again sidewalks put in. This is at Masiya Park Elementary, we connected the multi-use path to the entrance of the school before, there were some obstacles that you had to climb over to get to school and signs to move around. University Hills, you can see the improvement on the visibility of the crosswalk, and then if you got closer up, you can see the improvement, the tripping hazards and ADA ramps were installed, tripping hazards taken out and ADA ramps installed. And again, you can see ADA ramps and curb cuts at Lynn Middle School. The most noticeable improvements, Pecotia Middle School had a crosswalk that delivered children straight into the bus lane, and we moved it a little bit north, put a curb cut into what's considered a pedestrian refuge, a place where pedestrians can safely wait while they cross the road completely. So I think that's a nice improvement there as well, that's just another view of that. Again, Sierra Middle School, you can see the striping. The striping tends to happen, if you notice schools that didn't get striping updates, only schools with improvements receive striping updates now, but the city does go in and do re-striping before school starts. So you should be able to see some of those improvements happening early August. We had bike racks installed at all of the schools that received funding, so 10 schools received bike racks. And then those schools that didn't receive the additional infrastructure improvements received bike racks that were funded through the Safety and Security funds. And so now, all elementary, middle, and high schools have very nice bike racks. So just wanted to give you a quick update about the program and is it working? Seventeen of our elementary schools have regular walking school buses. Sixteen of those are weekly, one of those is monthly. But the one that's monthly, the volunteer who does that is a grandparent volunteer, and she has a bike train that she started to school every single day. So really, 17 schools are up and going with that. We did third grade classes in 16 elementary schools this year, that's the pedestrian and bicycle safety education. And we had a spring walking contest, and in the eight weeks from the end of January through spring break, we had 3,676 students walk to school with the Safe Roots to School program. So please note that that doesn't count students who walked without the program, there are many students who walk with their families or alone, but these are just the ones that walked with our groups. I just wanted to recognize Hornada Elementary, we had this contest where they could win this golden tennis shoe, you can see Diane holding it there. And they did not share it, they had it every single week. We were supposed to share it around to whichever school had the greatest percentage of walkers. And Hornada had the greatest percentage of walkers every single week, with 23% of their students walking. That's an average of 125 students walking in a group every week with Hornada. So that's special congratulations to them. We had two schools that, in the contest, were eligible to win a bicycle blender. Hornada won, and Loma Heights won. These two categories were based on whether they had Safe Roots to School-funded champions or whether they were staff-run or volunteer-run. So Loma Heights won the bicycle blender for the staff and volunteer-run one. So a bicycle blender is a pedal-powered blender, basically. So kids hop on it and they use their own pedal power and move all the gears and make smoothies. So we, those schools can keep those as incentives for parties and whatever they want to do and be able to do. It's great fun, I've never seen somebody who had a frowny face looking at the bicycle blender party.
Now, do I understand that Dr. Sanchez, because he's such a health nut, has indicated that he's more than willing to go do some kale blended smoothies at any time we'd like to ask?
I'll join you, that sounds delicious.
Perhaps, Madam President, if Madam President and members of the board join me, I'd be happy to try it.
I like kale smoothies.
I'm not sure Dr. Sanchez does. I'm sorry.
We'll try that one next time. This week is National Bike to School Week, and so this is celebrated throughout the district. We have 19 schools that have signed up, and I'd like to add, that's 19 out of 31 in the state of New Mexico. So we are well ahead of every other city in New Mexico. I think the next one after us has five, and that's Farmington. But Albuquerque had a showing of two schools. So really, we're miles ahead with this, and we see that when we do International Walk to School Day as well. So we have 19 schools who are biking, we had five that biked this morning, and every week, every day this week, we'll have kids biking to school at various schools. So it's really exciting, and if you're a bike enthusiast, please, please let me know, and we'd be happy to hook you up. We always need volunteers to help get the kids to school safely. Our goals for 2015, 2016 are to begin education in middle school, and thank you to Dr. Sanchez, we are hoping to do one of the, a program with the middle school teachers this summer to be able to start brainstorming how that will work most effectively. Our goals also are to continue education in elementary school, and really, we'd like to work on sustainability. So this year, we really worked with PE coaches during PE time. Our goal is that the PE coaches would then be able to take that on and continue it. If need be, we can come in and assist or move on to other schools that have not yet started their education programs. Encouragement, continue supporting elementary schools that have ongoing walking school buses and bike trains, and encourage those schools that don't have programs yet to start. And let me just add, there are some schools that have a no-walking biking policy, and Fairakers is one of those schools. But there are also some other schools that that isn't safe to do a walking and biking program. So we don't want to, you know, make them look like they are not participating, it just wouldn't be safe at those schools. So that would be schools that it would be appropriate. Continue with International Walk to School Day this coming October, and then National Bike to School Day next year as well. Enforcement, we have a good relationship with law enforcement, we'd like to continue working with them, they're an enormous asset to us in helping us with these events. Codes is out there, the police department comes out and helps us with all of our big events, or anytime there's a problem at a school regarding getting kids to school safely, they are there and happy to help us. We're going to continue to update our action plan through the Metropolitan Planning Organization and identify any other problem areas that need engineering for future funding. So we would like to get that all lined up and ready so that in the future, when we can access more funding, hopefully through Department of Transportation funds again, we'll be ready to go with that. And evaluation is a continuing process, a continuing project that we work on. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for your continued support, we couldn't do it without your support, and we just have a great time doing it and welcome you anytime. So again, we walk pretty much every day of the school year, so if you feel like getting out and starting your day with the kids, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, any questions from the board?
Anyone?
I just had one. What are some of the challenges, the school district, when it takes some of these, I think they're magnificent, they're great programs. What are the challenges, what are the safety concerns that you have to deal with?
Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Castro. Some of the safety concerns that we have to deal with, obviously, referring constantly back to law enforcement, speeding cars, people coming through, you know, way too fast through speed zones, some of it is education, getting out and making sure that pedestrians know that when they step out into the sidewalk, they need to be paying, into the crosswalk, they need to be paying attention to what's going on around us. One of the challenges within encouragement is just changing, changing the culture of getting to school. I think a long time ago, in the 60s, that was the main way, the primary way that people got to school, and now people just drop their kids off on the way to work. The more people that drive and drop their kids off on the way to work, the more traffic it creates around the school, creating a less, a less safe environment for our pedestrians. So it's really trying to break that cycle of, that culture of just drive a block and drop your kids off at school. So there are many challenges, and we face them, we face them every day, and we take what we can do in the positive and move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? I'd just like to thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it, you're encouraging our students to get to school healthily. I remember walking quite a distance at one point, so it's a good thing. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam President, I think I might move us to item 3A2. If I may, Madam President, I'd like Mr. Dean to give you the overview of the part-time employee resolution that we are requesting your approval on this evening. Mr. Dean?
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Rounds, included in your pocket tonight is a resolution in which we adopt every year. The New Mexico Public Schools Insurance Authority rules are that anybody that works 20 hours or more is eligible for the benefits through NIPSA. As a Board of Education, as a district, we have many employees that work half-time, or what we will call a .5 FTE, but they work actually less than 20 hours, but they're a half-time, we consider them a half-time employee. The district for years has offered benefits to those employees that are working 15 or more hours per week. This resolution continues that practice. Mr. Rounds, I recommend.
Madam President, we recommend your approval of this. We'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have preceding that action.
And, Mr. Dean, would that be for next, this next year, or is it for this year?
Madam President, members of the board, that is for next year. We adopt that in May of every year for the subsequent year.
All right, any questions, comments? So then, I will entertain a motion to approve the part-time employee resolution.
Is that a roll call?
Madam President, if a motion and a second would be in order, and then a roll call vote because it's a resolution is the protocol you follow.
Okay.
Second.
A motion?
So moved.
A second.
And we'll have a roll call then, Ms. Hall?
Mr. Frank?
Is it possible to have some more discussion on this?
Well, yes, after the second, yes.
And, Madam President, you're at that point, you had a motion, a second.
And, Mr. Frank, did you? Just wondering, you know, there's no money attached to this, so I was just wondering, you know, if we could see something of that sort.
Okay.
So, Mr. Dean, would you like to give them a financial impact statement of this?
Madam President, Mr. Franks, we do not have a, did not anticipate that question, to be quite frank. I have not computed what the cost savings would be to not offer those benefits, to quit offering those benefits to those employees. I can compute that, it, yes, we can compute that number.
Madam President, let me walk us through one piece of this. I'm looking at our colleagues with NEA here, and I don't see CSEC, but this is included within our collective bargaining agreement. Years ago, it used to stand at the federal law, which was 20 hours as the dividing point. But because our duty time during the day approximates six hours, then the decision was made in the collective bargaining agreement to recognize that. So if we were to move off of this practice, we would need to bargain that also at the table. And we'll be happy to get to the financial impact, I apologize we haven't, it's been a standard practice long enough that we haven't vetted that out.
Do we have any idea how many employees this would be? You don't know that off the top of your head either?
Madam President, no, ma'am, I do not have a number for that, that would fall into that category.
Madam President, the largest group of employees will be in food services. The second-largest group is likely to be in custodial, and the third-most likely group will be educational assistance.
That is correct.
In that order. I just don't know the numbers.
Mr. Frank, did you want to proceed in with the vote?
Sure.
Okay, all right, and you will get that information to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, Ms. Hall?
Yes?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes, so it passes.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, that brings us to the reason Terry got up and moved over here, is he's next on the agenda with a budget update. I would only indicate to you that in your materials, Madam President, after our retreat last week, you and I had a sidebar conversation. This is my first attempt at capturing the things you talked about as a board. It basically would be potentially a letter to the Secretary of Education expressing our concern about the underfunding that we have this year and in prior years. It iterates a few of the decisions you're making, and our intent, should you wish to go this direction, is to then attach to it a worksheet that you'll be seeing today from Mr. Dean, that then breaks out the decision points that you made last week, and then any others would be subsequent to it. I just didn't want to confuse, why was it on the dais? It was an attempt to get that to you, so you would have, you would have that. And also, I believe, Madam President, under your next item, at B3, the Leading Edge Accelerated Program, one of the things you'll see in the presentation is the assumption of removal of that from budget. So just so you're aware of those, and that's a little out of order perhaps, but I just wanted to sensitize you to the planning parts that are in that. So if I may, Mr. Dean, to do the presentation.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Rounds, today's presentation, you know, I feel like it's one of the old melodramas, you know, the last time we saw our hero, he was tied to the railroad track. And so that's where we pick up, is tied to the railroad track, and when we left our discussion last week, as we looked at the big buckets that to make, to make the hard choices, and first of all, I would like to commend the board for the hard choices that were made last week, as we, as we put this budget together. As we left it last week, we still needed about $939,000 to finish balancing the budget. As we went back and started working on the data, there are items that we identified that we could not save as much money as we estimated. Specifically, what I'm referring to is, at one point, we looked at downsizing our, the number of educational assistance we had by 20 positions. We were not able to identify 20 positions that we could absorb. However, we were able to determine 10. That is the, approximately $1.3, just shy of $1.3 million out of balance. So as part of today's update, we bring back more choices that we've actually have gone back and tried to determine, where are some other areas that we may be able to cut to balance the budget? One that we talked about, and I've asked Dr. Marufo, since she talked about the staffing, to actually talk about, because she is much more knowledgeable in that area than I, and that is rounding down at certain locations. So if you, Madam President, if you do not mind, I'd like to refer to Dr. Marufo to talk about that issue.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, if you will recall, at retreat, I reviewed the class-size staffing formula that I use for elementary school. And if you recall, I used an example from an elementary that indicated, based on the proper, the appropriate class sizes per grade level, that school would need 28.22 teachers for that school, but we budgeted for 29 teachers. So... So we rounded up. And in this case, what Terry is referring to, the seven positions, I went back and looked at, um, the school numbers and looked at where we could round back down and not feel a heavy impact, um, due to that staffing adjustment.
Um, I'm sorry, where was, where do we see that on here?
Madam President, I'm sorry, on, on your, on your-
More choices.
Sheet, on your, uh, printout of your, of the spreadsheet, you will see down closer to the bottom where it has more choices. And I did not highlight that well enough. But those, these are the additional items that we've actually been able to look at and to, to see. Um, and, and you'll see where it says round down seven, seven teaching positions. And that, that's approximately $420,000. The next item on there is the fleet replacement fund. We've talked about this internally for a long time, that a lot of times, many years, many years, we do not have the resources to replace vehicles for students to travel back and forth, you know, if the golf tournament, or the golf team taking a Suburban to a golf tournament. Uh, so we, we have difficulty having money, finding money to replace those vehicles. So we were going to institute an internal service fund to start gathering resources to where we could replace those vehicles in a more timely manner. If we scrap that for one more year and look at it again next year, well, if we pull that off the table, that saves us approximately $140,000. Now, here's a note that I, I've failed to mention, but I wanted to mention it early on. One of the things that is already included in the budget cuts, and I, and I think that this is very important, uh, for the board to know, is the testing cost beyond what is required by state statute or New Mexico Teach has already been removed from this budget. So the only testing cost that is included in this budget, uh, is the cost that is either required by New Mexico's Teach or by state statute.
So, Madam President, I know that when we talked last, last week, we thought we might see a savings of upward of $400,000. In our assumptions, as we went back and checked our notes, we had already taken everything except what's required out, which means things like discovery testing is no longer in these numbers already. And so we don't have those kinds of margins we talked about last week. And so we were unable to generate any other revenue savings from that sector.
So then, uh, what Dr. Sanchez has had brought up, that we're not getting any savings from that?
That's correct, because we had already, Madam President, as, as we looked back at it in cabinet, had already taken credit for that. We'd already moved that on in our work papers and hadn't realized when we presented to you last week.
All right.
Madam President, and, uh, as we continue, continue on our list of additional options or additional choices, more choices, the LEAP program, we believe that the recurring cost that would be, um, that could be saved by mothballing that facility until we can determine what the program is approximately $290,000.
Is that including staff?
That is including staff, but what we would do is we would absorb those staff into positions that they were qualified for, um, with, within, within the, um, structure that we have.
Madam President, to be explicit about that, that is, includes staff costs and other associated costs with running the facility today. And the point we'd like to just make is the staff, like all, all other staff at the district, as we right-size, we would look for those options for their reassignments as appropriate to their license. And so, so, but that is the net saving-
Okay.
-that you're able to take off of mothballing that facility.
All right. Thank you for that.
The next option that we were able to look at, and we're researching this, is currently the district spends approximately $500,000 a year for lunchroom monitors. And, um, um, if we cut that in half. Now, we are looking at a cost share with the food services fund. So we believe that we should be able to reduce the cost of the operational fund because the operational fund can, the food services fund, and I, as I said, I would do want to give a qualifier on here, we're doing some examination of this. We believe that the, the food services fund can pay for the monitors that are in the cafeteria proper, but they cannot pay for monitors that may be on the playground.
So, Madam President, let me just interpret that for a minute. So this isn't necessarily, we, this scenario does not cut the monitors out, it reassigns costs to the duties they perform.
That is correct.
And so, half of them would be continued under operational dollars, and half of them because of the lunchroom supervision. We believe, and this isn't for sure, because we're checking federal code right now, but we, I believe very strongly that we will be able to capture that by switching the cost of that fund. And as you know, the board took action earlier to increase rates to meet a federal requirement. That increased revenue source is certainly more than sufficient to absorb this cost. And so that's a, a bit of a shell game, if you-
So then it would switch to food services?
So the, the cost of half of them would be a food services cost. Uh, that fund originally, as it was thought of by the Fed, was much like I explained, transportation in the retreat, it was an in-and-out, all-in. And we have supplemented that in the district and by the way of the cost of the monitors. And this would return to the original federal model. And, and I believe with some certainty, we'll get there. We just, we've got some work to do on code.
Okay. Let us know how that sits.
Yes, ma'am.
How that comes out.
Madam President, members of the board, the next option that we looked at is, as far as additional choices to, to balance the budget, is the school resource officers. If we pull back on the school resources officers for the middle schools. Currently, the district, and I'm, I'm rounding numbers, approximately $500,000 a year is what the district pays for, um, resource officers at, at the high, secondary schools, middle schools, high schools. If we pull back on the middle schools, we believe that we could generate a savings of approximately $300,000. That is retaining the, um, the resource officers at the large high schools.
And, Madam President, what that then effectively would do is move our security onto our existing security employees, and then have the ability to call in school resource officers from the high school in that area and/or patrol. That would be part of the Los Cruces Police Department.
Um, well, this is all food for thought, right?
Yeah, food for thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, uh, Mr. Hockus, what do you think about that? Using your SRO?
Good morning.
Welcome.
I have a principle here, I need to ask-
And tied to the tracks was our hero.
President Flores, members of the board, Mr. Rounds, um, you know, they're, they're a great resource for us. Um, they're, they're just, they're not just there for, um, criminal activity. I mean, they're there to really help connect with students and provide, um, just a, a law enforcement presence and allow that. And it's really hard to measure what, what's the preventative cost of that? Because what, what, the police car parked in front of our school, what does that prevent from us? So, um, every resource is a great resource, and our school are way out in the middle of nowhere, so it's a great resource for us.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Comments from the board?
Uh, no, I, I just, I wanted to go back to the, the, uh, teaching staff to the right size. How did they derive that, the teachers? Who did the study? They didn't just divide by a teach, they didn't go by classroom, I guess is my real question.
Madam President, let me defer if I may, back to Dr. Marufo, and it is classroom by classroom, school by school, that, and, and remember our discussion last week was, if you had, when you looked at the current enrollment and the assumed enrollment coming in, and you did your, your work on that, in some cases, you would have a .28 teacher. So we rounded up in all cases. If it exceeded that level, we rounded up. And the methodology is simply to go the other way. The .28 would not generate a full other teacher, would not generate any teacher load. Liz, let me have you talk to that.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, um, as you recall, in the retreat, I presented you with the four-year trend analysis regarding the enrollment. That was the starting point to determine the PTR that we've had over the past four years. From there, looking at current numbers and projecting for the 2015-16 school year was based on current enrollment moving forward. You remember, in mid-school, we used the 17.3 to 1, and in high school, we used 19.1 to 1.
But this was done classroom by classroom?
These seven additional teaching positions recommended here is a classroom by classroom analysis. Please remember with me, everybody, that the analysis we're doing is based on our very best projections of enrollments. And please remember with me, everybody, that they don't come in those little packages next year. And so as you set budget up, you're doing a little bit of projected work. We're using our very best models, and we're looking at what we know about classrooms today, making those assumptions. And the only difference is, it's a one-teacher question. Notice that's not across all elementary sites. It's in those cases where the, the portion of the employee was greater than the full number, but less than half. And if that's the case, rather than granting that position, in seven cases, Dr. Marufo drew that back, and that's the additional seven teaching position proposition that is in this.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Castro?
Uh, yeah, could you recap, uh, what sacrifices are, are being made at the administrative level? And, and what more can we, what more choices could we possibly have on that?
Mr. Castro, that's a very good question. Let me give you an update as to where we are. During the budget assumptions, the first assumption was, is we were going to reduce, um, salaries in the, in the, um, central office, operational salaries by a hu, by $500,000. Now, there's, there's another part to that story, but let me tell you the first parts first. Last year, as we determined, as we could see, the budget stress that we were having, there were 13 positions within the central office that were not filled, that we had people that would leave a position, or we had an FTE authorized, that we've already shrunk during the current year, we shrink 13 positions. Now, I do not have a dollar amount as to what the budget on those were, but we didn't spend all of that money for the current year. So we did shrink the, the central office staff by 13 positions during the current year. In projection for next year, going in, we are currently at $412,000 reductions as of right now. We still have some more work to make. This is in addition to the 13 positions that we've, that we've already absorbed, that it was a no-brainer that those were already lost.
So, Ms. Castro, I think close approximation, we'll get to the number, the 13 positions likely netted about $450,000 in current year reductions, wouldn't you say, Stephen? And so this is on top of that, it's another half a million dollars. So from a year ago to next year, it's a reduction of almost a million dollars at central office staffing. To go directly to your question about how much further can you cut, we're of the opinion that we can't. We believe that million-dollar slide is, is what we can factor out as far as authorized staff positions. So we, the 13 that were in hold, that were unfilled, would now go completely off the map, plus the additional half a million dollars of reductions in FTEs on top of that. And we think that's all we can offer.
I have a question in that regard. Is the PL's-
But you mean- Is, within the central office budget, and just to cut to the chase there, we have, the scenario that's in this budget has the elimination of 11 IS positions or PDT positions, and a recoupment or reassignment of five of those. That's a net six reduction. And that net six reduction approximates $270,000 in savings in that sector. Now, the tricky part here is all of those, many of those are not in the operational side, but are in the federal side. And so there's a similar savings in that regard in the, in the federal side, which we also need to make happen within this budget cycle. And Dr. Sanchez, you might want, or Dr. Marufo might want to speak to that.
I, I think it's, I think it's important, Madam President, and Mr. Rounds, members of the board, just to remember that we also see a decline in federal revenues coming for the district, our Title I money, and our Title II money, which is really the professional development money that has been supplying the instructional specialists. And that's why staff got together and came up with a plan to reduce those 11 positions down to the five.
The reason that I ask that specifically is that someone pointed out to me that online there are five PD positions.
There were five, ma'am. And, and that's correct. And that was, so, so let me go there for a minute. So when you lose 11, you add five back. In our accounting system, you have to reopen positions. Now, they're inadvertently and improperly advertised. The real issue is, as you draw down 11, of that 11, five will be reassigned into this new structure. So that was, that was confusing, and I read some things and sat off, I got some, uh, phone calls also about it, and, and I just want to be very clear-
Well, people are signing up for them right away.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I want to be very clear that that's not the option. It'll be a reassignment option within that whole scenario. They're not new positions, it's, it's, it's-
They're not new.
You have to re-codify them into the positions they be, they are, because these are curriculum specialty areas for secondary. And the original 11 were not. They were a, a generalist qualification. So that was an inadvertent oops, and we, we have it offline, and I just want everybody to be very, very clear, we didn't invent five positions, we're not growing PDTs, PDC, we're actually shrinking the world across all sectors.
Um, I'm gonna go to this side. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Because I have one more question for Mr. Dean.
Yeah, I'm just, could you elaborate on the, um, teaching staff to right-size the 2.4 million there? And, and just elaborate on, on the impact of that?
At the very, the, the 2.4 million that's at the very top of this, of the session, of the worksheet, that was an item that we addressed at the board retreat, but I'll, I'll turn this over to Dr. Marufo.
Yeah, once again, at the board retreat, um, based on the formulas that I presented to the board on that day, um, there was a reduction in staff at the secondary level of 29 positions, 10 positions at the middle school, and added one position at the elementary school. So that, that's where that number came from and that amount.
And, and Madam President, Mr. Frank, the model that we are using is the 11-12 staffing model, where we met most state requirements across the board, and we were able to con, conduct instruction in reasonable semblance to what it looks like for next year as we look across the curriculum being developed. And the discussion we had was about the additional staffs that we had brought on, basically with cash balance, that now we need to re-compute and perhaps return to the practice of 11-12 in staffing. And those ratios that you heard Dr. Marufo talk about were the ratios that prevailed of that year, and we're simply returning to that practice.
So that's a, a loss of 29 positions?
That is correct.
Yes.
Actually, thirty-one.
It's actually 31 positions, I believe, Mr. Frank.
Okay, I, I jotted down the numbers quickly.
So 29, yes, sir.
I, 29 at the high school, and there was one at the middle school, but then there was a gain at the elementary-
At the elementary school, that's correct.
So that, you know, that's why I got the 29.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Hall, did you have any? No? Okay. I have a question for Mr. Dean. Um, uh, every year, we, we go and revisit the ERB contribution- year, we, we go and revisit the ERB contribution for return to work. What would the savings there be for that if we, if we chose this next year not to cover that?
Madam President, the, the current cost of that is approximately four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred, okay. And would you recommend doing something like this at this point, since we are in such a crunch here? Because, you know, your choices are, most of them, I can't really support, the, your more choices here, so we're looking for other, other avenues.
Yes, ma'am. We, we were looking for additional, additional savings. As far as a recommendation, I would like to be the one that just puts the numbers together. I, I'm, I would elect not to make a recommendation, one way or the other, on that.
Then could you prepare an outcome, or see what the financial implications would be for our return-to-work folks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we need to consider that maybe this, this year.
Madam President.
As a temporary measure.
Ma'am, when you say financial outcome?
Well, what it means to, to the, to the retirees that are coming back to work.
So, so Madam President, what I hear you asking is, the number of return-to-work employees, what classifications they are, and what the effect is in that.
For their pay.
For their pay in, in that regard. And Madam President, we, would you mind if we also provided a, a scaling recommendation in that? Here's my worry. We, we have a, a number of highly qualified teachers that we brought back to fill very specific slots, and in that, we promised them that they would have that deferred. So, one of the things that could be looked at as an example is a, is a fifty percent of the share, is a shared cost, is maybe a staging, some things like that. Would, my worry is chilling employees we've brought back in. I think that's, that could be problematic.
Well, that's a consideration, and we'll just, we'll just look at that as another possibility, okay?
Absolutely.
Do you want us to kind of raise our hand, whether we like one of these choices more than another? Do you want us to do that?
Madam President, any, any ideas from the board, because you can't vote for this, but like we did in the retreat, any ideas about preferences would assist us, because we have about a week.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do you want to answer today?
Madam President, it would, it would save me money on Maylocks if we had an, if we had an answer quickly.
All right. So, we just show hands as to preferences. I can go down each one.
Absolutely.
What do you think? Okay.
How do you feel about that? Just show of hands if you agree with it or not. Round down.
That's probably...
Do you know where we're at right here? Under more choices, round down, seven teaching positions.
I'd have to know how that would impact, you know, before I could really make a decision on that. I just need more information on that.
Well, that's worth four hundred and twenty-five.
I know, it's, it's a lot of money, you know, and I know it, it just, it's a, it's just a fraction, but it's, it's really, it's a teacher.
Yes.
At each, at seven locations.
Right.
And, and, you know, that's going to have an impact on the student-teacher ratio. And I just would like to understand it a lot better before I would enthusiastically endorse that.
Well, you don't have to endorse it, Mr. Frank.
Okay.
Madam President, if you would like to, Dr. Marufo can, can...
Madam President, members of the board, I would be happy to sit with Mr. Frank. I know he was absent on the day of the retreat, and I'd be happy to review that information with you.
All right. So, we only had one hand raised for that?
For rounding down?
Yes.
Yes. Show of hands, please, from the board. Just show if you're for it.
Rounding down, is that's all schools or selected schools?
Seven, seven teaching positions.
I understand that.
So, these are, so, Madam President, Mr. Dean?
Are they tied to certain schools, or is that...
We don't know that right now.
Madam President, that's...
Certain schools I just don't want to mess with.
Okay. So, then, we'll say that that's a no, okay? The fleet replacement fund, the cars.
I think we can...
All right. We're good on that one. The LEAD program, that's to be discussed, so we won't, we won't talk about it right now. The lunch monitors, if it can be covered by food services, I'll go for that one.
I'll go for that.
And the school resource officers, I choose no on that one. I don't know about, but that's just me.
I choose no also. Is there very important?
Just, if you're for it, just raise your hand. Okay. So, that, does that give you a little bit of?
Madam President, that gives us...
Oh, a little bit.
Four hundred thousand dollars of leverage and a one-point-three-million-dollar problem.
Okay. Well, we'll keep working on it.
We're at eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Madam President, would...
At this time.
I appreciate the direction of the board. We're going to have to go to the ground on this. We're going to have to make some decisions. Absent the decision of the board, we're going to have to make the decisions as administration. I can't give a budget that isn't in balance.
But you also want our approval. So, I mean, it's just, let's, let's work together on it, all, all the way up until the end, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Madam President, just one other thing, you know, a lack of judgment on my part. If I would have realized the architects were sitting here, I would have buttoned the, the button on the pocket with my wallet in it, because they're always trying to get in our wallets.
We could pass the bucket around this room right now. We might do really well. Thank you. So, now, we're going to instruction. Dr. Sanchez?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The first on the agenda is, is a presentation and a short video from Fair Acres Elementary. And I had the, I've had the opportunity to visit that school and some of these classrooms, and I'll ask Kathy Norris and her staff to come forward and present the program.
We've been working with Dr. Knapp through NMSU, and she's been coming into our school, working with Mrs. Guy, our third-grade teacher, and a few other teachers to teach our students engaging strategies, to use kinesthetic learning to comprehend for mathematics. And Dr. Knapp will talk a little bit more about that. Thank you.
First, first, we're going to show the video.
Okay, great.
In almost every classroom, there are those kids that simply cannot sit still. But rather than dealing with them as distractions, what if teachers considered their behavior as evidence that the child's learning modality was not being met? It is important to understand that not all children learn the same way. Standard pedagogy commonly recognizes three learning styles: visual, auditory, and kinesthetic. Visual learners crave pictures, charts, or demonstrations to connect with the lessons, while the auditory learner requires explanations and lectures. But how to reach the kinesthetic learners? And that brings us back to those fidgety, noisy, and sometimes frustrating students. During the 2012-13 school year at Fair Acres Elementary, Dr. Deborah Knapp, Director of Dance for the New Mexico State University's Department of Kinesiology and Dance, piloted a program designed to introduce methods in learning kinesthetically, or MILK. That year, Dr. Knapp and her team went into a classroom intent on improving the reading comprehension and fluency of fifteen third-graders through movement. By year's end, fourteen of the fifteen had moved up a grade-reading level, and the teacher reported more collaborative learning, more student engagement, and long-term comprehension, with fewer behavior issues and less test stress. Over the next two years, the MILK program was expanded. This year, all of Fair Acres' third-grade classes have integrated movement into their classes. Strategies like sign language, body writing, or interpretive movement, to name a few, have kids up and learning. Teachers have bought in and now recognize the benefits.
They're, they feel more comfortable with sharing. It's, it's given them a lot of self-esteem and confidence. They don't feel like so scared of the third graders, because they're like, hey, I can teach them this now, too. So, they're really engaged, and I can find really good ways to put them in charge of ELA groups that we do. I think that MILK really helps, especially in vocabulary and spelling development, you know, and understanding. So, it's, it's great.
Students not only enjoy the activities, but learn from them as well.
Before a test, and we had read our story, I act out the movements to remember the sequence of events. So, it helps me out with my learning.
The dream for the future would be a kinesthetic teaching specialist at every elementary school. Experts who could help all teachers incorporate these successful strategies into their classrooms, thus ensuring we are doing our best to engage each and every child.
Whenever my mind forgets, my body remembers.
It's wonderful.
Well, and the amazing thing is, is those were fifth graders who are still using the kinesthetic movements and improving their learning with it. First of all, let me just say, without the district's approval of letting us do things outside of the box and trying to discover fresh and new ways to improve learning, we wouldn't have been able to do it. And without Dr. Knapp and her wonderful facilitators, who come into our school every day to help us improve learning with students. And I really see it in improvement in retention of information, improving comprehension, and just making learning more meaningful, more personal. Doctor?
I'm going to talk really fast, because I have a lot to say. This is my passion. I have been doing kinesthetic movement in classrooms since the early 1970s. Don't do the math, please. And one of the things that we talk about, we've named it MILK, Movements, Methods in Learning Kinesthetically, but what we're really doing is including all the modalities together. So, we learn by seeing. We learn by hearing. We learn by moving, and we learn by touching. And so, taking all four of those modalities and putting them in the classroom all the time, we're not eliminating anything. This is just another input system. It increases engagement, and it increases retention. Classes become an energized environment, where both teacher and student voice and creative exploration are valued. This is where students become really invested in each other's learning, and we have seen that, because they are team teaching and peer tutoring each other all the time in our classrooms. And also, I, and you probably know this as well, the more lenses I use to look at something, the more tools that I have, the better I am at retaining the information, and, and the bigger impact I have on retention. I want to talk a little bit about some specific students. When we started in Victoria's class in third grade three years ago, we had a student who came in reading at the second-grade level, not at third-grade level, second-grade level. And by the time she left, she was at a fifth-grade level, and she was doing these movements constantly in class for retention. We had a D, we did the DRA tests then, and you couldn't separate fluency from comprehension. And so, some people who couldn't read very fast, I mean, I personally don't care how fast people read. What I care about, do they remember? And do they comprehend? I'm a really fast reader, but I don't always comprehend what I read. My husband's really slow. He remembers everything. So, I would love to have been able to separate that out, so we could get some really good comprehension scores. But here's what happened. We had a sped kid, and he really hated school in third grade, and he wasn't very happy every day coming to school. So, we did a DRA at the beginning of the school semester at, at the, at the school, and he had a fourteen. At mid-year, he went to twenty-eight. So, my question, is he really sped, or did he just find his way of learning? And he blossomed. I remember watching him come down the hall one day, when he was, didn't know anybody was watching him. And the difference between how he sat in class with a scrawl on his face to coming down the hall like this, going, "I love this kid. I love this kid. He's fabulous." We had also another student who you didn't see, who said, "Why don't you look at my attendance scores?" He's now in fifth grade. He said, "Why don't you look at my attendance scores? Because I hardly missed class in third grade, because this was fun, and this is where I wanted to be." And we did look at, we finally looked at it. Ninety-eight percent was what he came to class compared to eighties and low nineties from before and after. I have done professional development since the 1970s. I go in and do a one-hour, a two-hour, and three-hour. They don't work. I just tell you, they don't work. We do them all the time. We spend a lot of money on them. They don't work. The teachers get really excited about them, and they think, oh, I can do this. And they go back and try it in their classroom, and they don't have the support to, when they fail. So, they just throw them away and say, I, I can't do this. So, that's why my team, Anne and Christie and a few others, go in, and we spend all year with teachers. We go in and we spend the hour and a half in the literacy block. We start with three days a week, and then we go to two days a week. We end up with two days. We start as the lead teacher. Give me the lesson. Let me do it. Then we start passing to co-teacher and team teacher, and then I step out and I watch, and I coach my teacher to do this. Very successful. So, what's my dream? My dream is a classroom where students are active in the cognitive, the social, the affective, and the psychomotor domain. We talk about that in education all the time. We need all four domains all the time in every classroom. When kids are interacting with each other and engaging with each other, we're covering social domain and the affective domain all the time. When I add my movement into the classroom, I have the psychomotor domain, and everything is cognitive. Everything is cognitive. If we only look at cognitive, we are surely not educating the whole child.
Mrs. Guy, she's been an amazing supporter and awesome. So, she has an activity for you. Is it okay if I do it here, or do you want me to go to the front to do it? What would you like?
So, if we need to hear you, that's a good place for you.
Okay. So, this is fine?
If we don't, then out there's okay.
But I, Mr. Rounds, members of the board, this, this is such a phenomenal teacher. I really want you to come to the front and pretend we're your class.
Tell us.
I can talk pretty loud. Will this work for everybody? I'm used to talking over twenty-eight children, so it will work. But I feel weird with my back to you, so I'll do it up high, so you can copy me as well.
Yes.
I'm going to speak to you like I speak to my kids, so that way you're engaged. But I feel like you need to be taught something at your level, so that way it retains, that way you can understand what the children go through. I asked yesterday, when we did a dry run of this meeting, how many of you know the mission statement by heart? Our Los Cruces Public Schools. Do you happen to know it?
No.
Not by heart. We have to read it every day. Well, we ask children to know things by heart, and so, this is something that we use with our methods. We're going to use our body movements. We use sign language. At the beginning of the year, we teach them the alphabet and sign language. And so, a lot of those movements we're going to use. So, we're going to start off with the Los Cruces Public Schools, and I'm going to give it to you with L-C-P-S. So, we're going to make an L, make a C. A P is a beep, like, put two fingers up, put your thumb in between it, but point it down. And then S, we kind of put our two pointer and a middle finger, but kind of hide it behind our thumb. So, it's like this.
We're looking to see if the principals are doing this.
Game, game. Your thumb's on the outside, dude.
Modification.
Put your fingers down.
Modification.
He's got it. All right. So, let's start again. L-C-P-S. And what does that stand for? Okay, so we've got that part. Los Cruces Public Schools in partnership, we partner. Who do we partner with? So, when we partner, we're going to shake someone's hand. So, we're going to shake a hand. And we partner with our students, and I think of those as younger than us, learning something, so we're going to make little students. So, let's start from the beginning. Los Cruces Public Schools in partnership with students. And we partner with families as well. So, take two Fs, it's like the okay signal, and bring it together. So, and families.
Families.
Let's start again. Los Cruces Public Schools in partnership with students, families. And we also partner with the community, and those are people we work with. So, put your hands together and work with them. Bring it up together. Okay? So, here we go. Los Cruces Public Schools, partnership with students, families, and communities. And we're going to provide them services, right? So, we're going to provide a student center. You're the center, so we're going to center. Student center. And when we learn, we learn with our brain, so it's putting L on our brain. Learning environment. So, let's start from the beginning, so we repeat that movement. Here we go. Los Cruces Public Schools in partnership with students, families, communities, provide a student-centered... Provide a student-centered learning environment. We also cultivate, is it cultivate?
Yes.
Cultivate character. So the C is for my character, and when our character comes from our heart, so put that C at your heart. So we cultivate character. And we foster academic excellence. And I think of academics in my head, and we foster that excellence, it's going to wow you. So just wow that academic excellence. So from the beginning, let's put it together so far. Los Cruces Public Schools in partnership with students, families, communities. Provide a student-centered learning environment. We cultivate character and we foster academic excellence. And the last piece is, we embrace diversity. So give yourself a big embrace, we love ourselves, and it's all diverse, so we're changing the difference. Now let's say it all together. Los Cruces Public Schools in partnership with students, families, communities. Provide a student-centered learning environment. That cultivates character and fosters academic excellence. Embracing diversity. Diversity, and you did it without me at the end, so we wouldn't repeat that, but as we did it, I just engaged you orally. My oral learners were hearing it over and over again. My visual learners got to see it, we would have it up on my board, and my movement, my kinesthetics were feeling it. I would then ask you to go back to your desk, let's write this down. I could edit what you did later, this is, we're just going to keep adding to this and go. Every single person in my classes, they're doing it. Every single one of you has paid attention. Everybody in the audience is following along, and I see some smiles on people's faces. Thank you.
Now, do you have any questions?
I just want to say, I've seen Victoria since the beginning of her teaching experience. She was a wonderful teacher before, she is a fantastically wonderful teacher now. And if you think we were engaged, you ought to see kids, because I visit her classroom, and it's wonderful to see her teach. And kids really learn and retain.
Any other comments from the board?
Well, thank you for the presentation, Ms. Norris, Victoria, and I'm sorry, I don't remember.
This is for Ella, this is for...
And Ms. Knapp, I know, a long time ago, she came to Tombaugh and tried to teach us crossing things, I think.
Brain dance.
Ooh, I can't do it, but we need a lot of practice, but thank you, I think there's hope for this board after all, right?
We do have two staff members in the audience, would you please stand, staff members? Thank you for coming. And our NMSU staff, please stand.
Yeah, would you stand up, let's recognize them.
I want to say that Anne and I are researchers, and we are collecting data all the time on this, and we have some really great results. And we've written an article that's going out into journal two, and hopefully, we're going to put very good on the map.
Great. Yay. One other comment. Dr. Sanchez, do you think maybe this might be a good thing for Crossroads?
Madam President, members of the board, without a doubt. And to engage a broader audience of teachers, I actually asked our, our teacher this, this morning, or yesterday morning, if she would be interested in teaching a class this summer, that we would invite teachers to attend. And we'll make that as part of our Summer Academy. So really, our Summer Academy is going to be enriched with this way of learning, new way of learning. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And Dr. Sanchez, we're going to go on to the proposed mental health policy.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. At the, at your, at your work session in April, you asked about a policy regarding the emotional health of individuals who, who work in the Los Cruces Public Schools. So I searched the existing policy and determined that policy GBGC, which is Employee Assistance Wellness Programs, might be the logical place to examine, to make any changes, or to add language. This policy actually falls under the HR, the Dr. Marufo's department, so we will be collaborating on this, listening to your direction. I did receive today, members of the board, an email where some suggestions were made to this existing language that you see on the, on, on the screen here. But basically, the, the content of, of that language was that the Educational Assistance Program become, is, is available to all LCPS staff who may be experiencing some life issues or some mental health issues. It also, the language says encourages employees to seek such help and not fear any kind of retribution or stigma attached to that, fear of a loss of a job, or misjudgment, or mistreatment by anyone in, in the district. And that we ensure that the individual who might seek these services will have their privacy protected at all times by the district, that the LCPS supervisors will serve as employee advocates, and working with people that they work with in, in getting them if they see problems arising and maybe having confidential conversations. And that basically, the goal of the LCPS Employee Assistance Program is to provide employees a safe and helpful path to good health and a return to productive service to the district. So those are some comments that I received. And with that, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Marufo and I will take very careful notes of any comments that you have, and then this, perhaps bring a draft to you. But we thought this would be a logical place to embed that either in the policy or the regulation.
Okay. Any thoughts from the board members on, on mental health policy?
I, I think we've seen some examples where it's, where it's, you know, it, it's, it's not as helpful if, as it needs to be. And so we need to be very conscientious of, of reaching out to employees that are having difficulties. So that was my purpose in bringing it up, but I guess if nobody else has comments, we'll, let's see what you can draft together for us. I appreciate it.
Basically, and Madam Pres...
No, I just think it's a, it's a great idea. One of the, one of the issues, I think, is when an employee has certain kinds of problems, mental problems, they're in denial, and it'd be very difficult for them to take their responsibility on their own without any additional intervention strategy. Sometimes it takes a family members or a group of people to come together and confront the individual, because again, they're, they're in deep denial. Everybody else is wrong except you. And so this is one of, is one of the things you might want to consider.
Uh huh. Any other...
I agree with what he says, that, you know, just to have a program, we've got to figure out some way, I don't know how you have a confrontation, or I don't know that much about it, but I, it has to be brought into that somehow.
Well...
I think that point is incredibly valid.
Yes.
Yes.
And I think that our principals and our counselors in our schools are the ones that are going to be the first ones to see that, and then would need to make the referral or recommendation. So, but, but always with, it's hard, it's hard to get someone that, that is in denial to get, seek help. So I don't know how you, how you cross that bridge. It's a tough one.
And certainly, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Greer is always available to help us with these, with this tough issues, and we'll, Dr. Marufo and I will consult with them. But given the comments that I've already received, and we'll, let us work on something, and we'll bring back a draft to you, would you like that on May 26th, Madam President, or it's your June board meeting? Give us a little more time in June.
Yeah, I think maybe the June work session, just to look at it, and then...
We'll bring you a first draft.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Sanchez, we, the next item on the agenda is a discussion on the future of the Leading Edge Acceleration Program, and we just wanted to bring it up for discussion, and I'll defer to you first if you have any comments in that regard.
I, I, I don't, Madam President, members of the board, I don't have any comments directly related to that. We had prepared a presentation, but that's been removed, so we're, we're here to listen to any conversations or comments that you may want to share with staff.
Board members, I have a statement to make in that regard, but if you would prefer to go first, I'm willing to be last.
We'll let you go first.
All right, shall I go ahead? Okay, the board has responsibility to ensure that programs work for our students. We have been receiving so many complaints lately about the LEAP program that we thought we had to act. Issues raised are safety for both students and staff. Staff morale is extremely low, funding, and low student population. This program, as far as I remember, is two years old. It's an alternative middle school program, and it just hasn't garnered the amount of students that we would hope to serve in this program. Because of these problems, the board will take action by voting to discontinue the program for 2015-16, and this will be at our next board meeting. There will be a vote at our next board meeting, and there will also, we will also proceed with an investigation to decide the future of the program. So what we propose is to stop it for 2015-16, and then review the situation to see if we, what, I know that this program is near, has been near and dear to Mr., Dr. Sanchez because of the alternative aspect of it and the students that it serves, but I, all of us have met with staff there, and we're not, we're not sure that it should continue in its current form. So that's my statement. Does anyone else want to say anything? Or that's it? That's the discussion?
Did you say we're going to be voting on this?
Yes, we will. It'll be on the agenda for our board meeting.
The...
In me.
To me, okay.
I would like to query Dr. Sanchez possibly, I don't know for sure who else, how we're going to meet the needs of these kids if they're back in regular med schools. How, you know, is there a possibility that we can do creative things to help them be more apt to come to school? Because I know many of them have not wanted to attend at all, and attendance for these children is better than it has been.
Madam President, members of the board, Mrs. Hall, we're actually, actually, Superintendent, we talked about this in cabinet a little bit yesterday, what would a structure be to accept these students back into their home schools, working with those principals? And given the budget issues that are surrounding this and the other issues identified by the president, we would certainly convene the middle school principals if this is the action that we have to take, and work with them directly, and looking at those, I think there are, what, 50, 50, 58 students currently enrolled there, and how we would assimilate them back into their middle school. So we would have, work with the middle school principals to do that.
Okay.
Or the high school principals, who may be receiving some of those students who are eighth graders.
Madam President, I could also, along those lines, three weeks ago, I asked Dr. Sanchez to appoint a, to appoint a, a task force to look at middle school alternative, that broader structure, as we look down line to the 16, 17 school year. I'm convinced, members of the board, we must do something different in middle school. And I'm not here to be argumentative, but it's, that's, that's an essence, and I know we're together and wanting to look at and end the game for that. And as we prepare to the budget, based on discussions we've had with you, Madam President, and other members of the board individually, please note, we anticipated the action you might take at the end of the month. Our problem with the budget is we have to move on it today. And so what I hear say, on your, on your comment, is the board's preference will be to remove those costs from the budget.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, I speak for myself, if anyone stands to differ, do you speak up now?
Again, we can't vote, we're, we're getting direction because we are moving up.
I understand.
We're getting hard now. Dr. Dean and I have lost a lot of sleep, we're about to lose a whole lot more.
Okay. Any other comments in regards to LEAP?
I think, yeah, I would go along with, like, assuming that that cost will be removed, that, you know, I think that's a good way to, to proceed.
Madam President, what I will also commit to the board is we'll go back and do a more finite analysis. I did some work today, and there may be a number slightly larger than the 290, not much, it's slightly larger, because I didn't take into effect a one and a half custodians.
Well, I think we're ready to move on, unless somebody has something else on that. We're ready for operations.
Thank you. Madam President, let me turn to Mr. Kennon. Now, today, you have the opportunity to listen to our architects. I do want to recognize some folks in the audience. We have, I think, good representation from court, from, from those that will be in the court charter school complex and also the Los Montanes, and I see as an example, Mr. Torres and Mr. Robinson sitting over here. I know they have a very high interest in that part of the school. And so if I may, let me turn over to you, Mr. Kennon.
Thank you, Madam President, Superintendent Rounds, and at this time at the podium, we have our Director of Construction, Gloria Martinez, who will personally introduce each architect to speak respectfully to each project.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Rounds, this afternoon, I'd like to discuss three of the projects more in detail, and this is going to be a lot more detailed than what I usually do on one of my construction reports. First, we're going to start off with Los Cruces High School, we're going to give an update on that. And the presenters for that are going to be Rem Alley, he's from Rem Alley and Associates, and I'm going to have Miles Krenzel, and he's from AKS.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Rounds, it's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm from Alley Associates, an architectural planning firm here in Los Cruces. Miles is actually a partner in that firm, but he also has his own firm, which is AKS Architects, which is a firm I used to be a member of. I'd like to go through and talk a little bit about the first phase, which is well under construction right now. It's due for completion sometime in, in August of this year, and it's a time that's going to be, work out for movement into the classrooms and use of those spaces. And with that, I'd like to start off with some of the photographs. Up here, we, let's go back to the first one. We have a rendering that's shown back over here, and it's a rendering that we showed over a year ago to the board, and it's a rendering that shows the, the entrance, what's happening on that campus and that particular area. You can see the bridge, you can see that, that red area that goes around, which is the entrance area there, the canopy. And in back of that is we have our administration and the library back there in that glass As you can see, the project has been moving right along, and there are a lot of things that have transpired that have just kept it moving well. And one of them is that we're working with, I think, a successful relationship between two construction firms, the Sunt Firm and the Wooten Firm, which is a local firm. And I think it's been a great relationship from the standpoint, they both bring a lot to us. It's worked well from our perspective to see how it's progressed and kept the project moving, but the quality has been kept up. This is a shot looking in what we consider like the main mall, which is the connection. And this is the mall area that when you come in from the east side, from the east parking lot, you walk up a flight of stairs. And this is at the second level, and off to the left is the classrooms, and off to the right, there's some, there's an elevator and also some other facilities there. But the main thing is, is that this is the start of the connecting link, and let's go hit the next shot. And let's go hit the next shot. And this is how it is looking in the other direction. In the other direction, we're looking across the bridge. And the bridge, as we all know, I think, if you've ever driven down El Paseo, it's kind of hard to ignore it. It's, I think that's the best I can say. It's right there and you can't pass it. So, it's a, a part of that school which is integrated into the design. And this shows you, oh, you come up the flight of stairs. You go across, you go over there and you can go down that flight. Or you can take the elevator, which is off to the left here now. Let's hit the next one. And we have a couple of shots just showing you how that bridge has worked out. There's just a lot of structural things there. And all of the utilities, such as all the piping that goes back and forth between the two sides of the road, go across up above. And also, we have the heating and cooling for the bridge up in there. Next. And now, somebody told me I took this picture strictly for a picture of a bus. And I think that that wasn't quite the intent, but there it is, a school bus coming, coming across. This is a typical classroom. You know, it has the, it has the carpet tiles. It has a storage room where you can see the door back into it. It has a teacher station thereby, over by the window where the desk is and the, and the storage areas. And you don't see it, but it's off to the left of this room as we have a, what's the name of that?
Smartboard.
Smartboard. All the classrooms have smartboards. And I think it's really a great feature for this school that we're putting those in everywhere. The lighting is LED. And as you can see, you know, it, you can get different intensities, but it's a lot less lighting from the standpoint of the number of fixtures. But we're going to get a nice, even lighting effect out of there, which is no problem and all, but it's, it's a highly energized type of lighting. This gives you an idea of how that's proceeding along. After seeing that first rendering, you know, I've always wondered how it's going to look in comparison to it. And I think it's kind of hard to ignore how that red is going to work across there and how it fits into the building. And I think it's not a problem from my, my perspective, how it's developing. I think it's developing well in accordance with that rendering. Another shot of the bridge. Areas that I was talking about early, when I was talking about the stairs coming up, that stair was over there to the right-hand side there. And you go up that stair and there's coming across. It's similar on the other side, but it's not quite as developed and as far along. But that will be all finished, by the way, in August so that we can get everything started. This rendering is another rendering that we had well over a year ago. And it shows the courtyard that we're developing between the new and the old. On the right-hand side, it's really the new, where you have the classroom area immediately to the right. A little bit further on is the theater area. And on the far side down there, looking directly into it, is an outdoor, little presentation stage out there. And off to the left is the gymnasium, where we're coming back and putting a new front on it. And closer to us is a classroom wing, which has the sciences and so forth in it. This phase is really a difficult phase for us because we're working with a lot of elements that are of a different, very different size and scale. And as an example, the center building that we see, and this is just an elevation that studies that area, that center area, the roof was up there like eleven feet high. And today, we get up to fifteen feet or so in a one-story building because of all the utilities, the air conditioning, the lighting systems, and everything else. So, you're talking about some areas, like in that particular part, that was very low. And the massing was so much different than what we had across the way. The next to that, off to the right there, is the gym. And that gym is just huge in its size and its bearing. It's larger than anything else on that campus. And we're building onto the backside of it, which is going to be a, another area of a second gymnasium. Let's hit the next one. And this is just another shot that shows, these are development shots. They're really not presentation drawings, they're rough drawings that I did. And the drawings are developing how we want the buildings to come together into one complete area and campus. And this is the cafeteria. And the cafeteria is a new building, the new building where we're coming back in. And we're going to have a lot of outdoor eating areas. And these red areas are the canopies for that. We have outdoor feeding areas where you come up and you can purchase the food. And we have, on this particular building, I have to count them up, we have eight. So, we have a lot of facilities where they can come up here, purchase and keep, and go outside and sit. And we're talking about coming back in underneath these canopies and having fan systems and also systems that would be blowing cool air by moisture being put into the fanning systems and blowing out. We don't use the drip systems much anymore. We didn't have much success with those. But those, this other system, I've seen this over in the Phoenix area, and I thought they worked quite well. One of the things that we're trying to achieve, now, we have the patio which separates the new from the old in this long courtyard, this long courtyard patio area. And it's going to be filled with trees. It's one of those things that we wanted to develop with as much of the environment like we see down in Ol' Messia, where you have the plaza there and you have the trees and the, and the other elements of walking around. And that's what we were trying to develop. But the second thing we were trying to develop was we, we wanted to do something along bouts because right now, we've made a strong statement, we think, along El Paseo. And now, we think it's time that we also look in the second phase, we have to start looking at what we're going to do along bouts. One of the things that's currently being done is when you get up there, El Paseo, and bouts where they come together on that corner, there'd be a large strit, grassed area there, which is for the band, is for soccer practice, is for other uses. But the main thing is, is that instead of having a parking lot that you're looking through towards the school, now, we're going to be looking through a grassed area. And what we're doing now is we want to develop a second entrance into the athletic area. We have a curved area, I think most of you have seen that, either been inside it or you can see it from the road. In front of that is the cafeteria, which we're tearing down. And we're going back in and getting that curved area, that curved roofed area. And we want to make that into a major entrance into that athletic area, where we have the large gym straight ahead there and the secondary auxiliary gym off to the right. And we're going to have new locker rooms. And we're also developing the existing gym, I think, in a strong way from the standpoint. When we get done, it needs to have something to bring it up to the standards we're establishing elsewhere. So, along on bouts, we're trying to come up with a strong look, a look that will go ahead and combine with the look that we have along El Paseo. Is this your turn?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Rem. You notice who gets to talk about the fun stuff and who gets to talk about the nasty stuff. I'm going to cover how we're moving into Phase Two as we finish out Phase One this summer and a little bit into the beginning of the semester. As Mr. Alley mentioned, the bulk of the project will be, Phase One will be completed in August. We will still have some tail-end work on the site and some things to finish, but we're working with a contractor to ensure that the buildings are occupiable so that we can move into Phase Two. And one of the early directions from the board was to make sure we try to do as much abatement work and demo work in the summer. So, this first drawing illustrates what we're going to be doing this summer, working with the current contractor, since they're already on site, rather than bringing in a separate contractor. So, we stay working with them for coordination and... I should mention too, that the staff, Mr. Hindy, Mr. Campos, and his staff have been incredible through this project. And we're about to get into the core of the, of the building, so it's going to be even more of a demand on them. But they have been fantastic in their support and even accepting a former Trojan into their campus. So, but just wanted to give them kudos for adjusting and the staff adjusting to this, to this project. Just to give you a little bit of the lay of the land.
No one look up there?
Nope.
Give your finger over. There you go.
Not going to reach.
No, it's not getting there. Son of a gun.
Ceiling, there it is. Okay. Oh, let's see if we can fight it again. There it is. All right. So, this is currently Phase One in this area. New student parking lot, new bridge across here, sorry for my shaky hand. New turf field going in on the, on the north side of the campus, as Rem mentioned, working, this is a new PE band field, is an artificial turf field dedicated for the band and PE program, right adjacent to their current facilities. So, this summer program, work we're going to be doing takes place in this area, where we'll be taking down B Wing, C Wing, and getting abatement done in those areas during the month of June and then taking those buildings down in July before school starts. We'll be moving the portables offsite as well and setting up this area for the contractor's staging area and getting fences put in place so that when the kids come back in the fall, all that will be in place. Phase Two is scheduled to start in December, so we have a few months in there where we can adjust to the new facility, let the dust settle, so to speak, and get ready for this next phase. As we go into the next phase, Phase Two is, will work in three parts, Part A, Part B, Part C, mainly due to our ability to move kids around. As I mentioned, Mr. Hindy and Mr. Campos have worked hard. They're moving, going to be able to move all of this area out into the new facility, utilizing computer labs in every space available right now so that we can vacate as much area in Phase Two as possible. So, everything you see in blue will be Part A of that timeline. It's approximately a year long, but it's the majority of the campus. And then, most of the kids will be moving on this side of the campus because of the new facilities while we're working in this area of the campus. We do have access to the fieldhouses and stuff down here, but we're working out safe routes to those areas. The second part of the project will be the gym that you see in red, the music wing, science wings. And then, the final part will be converting the old auxiliary gym into the fieldhouse and the vocational area. This is our first attempt at this. We are working with the staff to maybe reorganize the gym when it takes place so that we don't affect the sports as much. But the new auxiliary gym will be in immediately, which is a full-size basketball court and can support those activities while the main gym is down. So, that's the basic project. This is over a two-year period. We're hoping to complete the project by December 2017, was our original goal. Right now, we're still tracking on that schedule. So, I'll stand for any questions at this point. It's a lot to take in and a lot to work, a lot of people working hard on this. So, I think at one point, we had almost 160 construction workers and 1,600 kids and 150 staff and all working in concert on 37 acres. So, it's pretty impressive.
Yep.
Any questions, Mr. Kenon?
Yeah, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Rounds, I want to also add that as we move all these teachers into the new area that we are, I'm working with Bobby Campos right now, he's working out a schedule to help the teachers move. Teachers as a whole are pack rats and have an awful lot of stuff. So, we're going to help them move, the district will, all right?
Okay.
In case you get comments from that.
When, when will that happen?
Probably, if they need to get packed up before the end of school so we can help move them over the summer.
Okay.
It'll be staged over the summer as we work.
Right, and that's what Mr. Campos is working on.
Okay.
And then, for Phase Two, as Mr. Kenon mentioned, we will include provisions in the construction contract for moving assistance from the contractor.
Okay.
So, we can relieve some of that burden on the staff.
Right, that'll be good, that they're getting help. Mr. Frank?
Where's staff parking in, in that picture?
Staff parking, there's some located on the east side right near the entry, but most of it is on these backsides with direct access to the facilities. This, this area that we're saving down here is mainly, it'll be some staff, it's the parent drop-off area, as well as students who have after-school activities so that they're located close to the gymnasiums, music areas, performing arts areas for those types of activities. So, we've tried to scatter the staff throughout and, but separate them from the students as much as possible.
Madam President, I would only say one thing to the audience and to the board. All money's not green. You see, we're able to move ahead because we have a state match that's paying two-thirds of this cost. You helped us get a bond through that pays for that cost. None of those dollars can help the budget we talked about earlier. I just want folks to remember, they go, how in the world are you building buildings and you don't have money? Well, it's different money. And so, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation and for the update. We look forward to, to the next phase.
Finish.
Our next...
Yeah, me too.
Our next project is Court Charter School Complex. This is a project that encompasses two charter schools. It's at the court area that used to be the Court Junior High. And we are presently building a new facility, and that will house J. Paul Tater. And we're remodeling the existing facility, and that will encompass Almodiarta. For this presentation, I have Jason Clark, and he is the president and the owner of Studio D.
Madam President, for the board members, sorry about my phone there for a second. Apparently alarms ignore when you have your phone muted. Apologize for that.
That's not a good thing when alarms come up.
Exactly. It's a good thing when you want them to go off, not a good thing when you don't. So, as, as she mentioned, we're, we're working at Court Youth Center. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, the picture you have on the screen is the existing Court Youth Complex. We're now calling it the Court Charter School Campus because we have two charter schools there. The L-shaped building, I'm going to find, there you go. The L-shaped building that you see here is currently no longer there. We have demolished that building as part of the first phase of the project. You can go on to the next slide. This is J. Paul Taylor. They're currently in the framing stages right now. It's coming up out of the ground really quickly. So, they're making great progress on that. This is about a 24,000-square-foot charter school complex to replace the existing facility that J. Paul Taylor is currently in. So, it's a K-through-eight school. It'll work its way into Almodiarta later, hopefully. Next slide. Just another view of the complex going in. So, we can get into the, the main focus of this presentation today is to talk about Almodiarta and how we are moving forward with that project. This project is going to take place in three different phases. And it's mainly basically about logistics and how we move students around the building and how we can remodel this. Summer only lasts two months these days, and so, we have to figure out how to get kids around. So, the first phase of this project, we have a laser that likes to disappear. There we go. The first phase of this project, and the main priority of the, of the project was to really get the west end of this building usable and functional. The second floor of this space has not been used in quite some time, basically because of accessibility. They only have stair access, they don't have elevator access. So, the first phase is going to be the west end of the building. Second phase will be the second floor of the main space. And the third phase will be the, the remainder of the first floor of the building. So, as we're demoing, we issued a notice to proceed to the contractor last week. Demo will begin very quickly inside the west area here as soon as Mr. Hartshorn can give us the space. And we'll be moving on there. If you go on to the next, thank you. So, the yellow area is the second phase, which will take place from January until May-ish of next, of 2016. And then, the first floor, we just talked about, will take place over the summer. You see here that we have, come on, laser, come back. There we go. We are going to be constructing an elevator and bathroom support building that will be connected to the facility itself. We've gone through a few different design iterations with the Historic Preservation Division on how they want this to connect to the building. So, the, the last scenario that they approved was they would like to have the building completely separated from the facility and basically attached with the bridge at the second level. They want to make sure the existing context of Court Youth exterior stays as, as existing as it possibly can. Go on to the next one. So, what happens on the first floor on the west side is we are able to take the music facility, which is currently located in these two classrooms. In August, they move into the new space, which is about twice the size of what they're currently using now. Once that happens, we'll be able to take the existing music and social studies classrooms, and we're going to be turning that into the ceramics and kiln rooms for that program. This helps us relocate classrooms from the second floor down to the first floor. This helps us relocate classrooms from the second floor down to the first floor. Ongoing will be the construction of the elevator tower, which will be completed in December. We'll also be able to get access to the crossroads facility in June, so we'll start construction immediately on science and biology classrooms in that facility itself. Go on to the next floor. The second floor, which is a space that currently is not used, we're gonna be relocating the visual arts program from the three classrooms that they have here. Ceramics, we just talked about, goes to the first floor. The two other visual arts classrooms get new classrooms here, which are really gonna support their programs. Their advanced printmaking and drawing classes are currently in a classroom that's way too small for them, and so we're gonna be able to provide them with space they really need. The other really nice function that's gonna happen on the second floor above the dressing rooms, which is important, is the new dance studio. We're gonna be putting in a specialized dance floor there. That, that'll allow, that'll free up the stage area and the auditorium space for different uses during the week. So the dance instructor is pretty excited about this new space that she's gonna be getting here. So that's really pretty much it as far as how we're, how we're gonna be functioning. The functions, the functions of the classroom upstairs really don't change very much. We're gonna be moving some administrative functions to the crossroads building and taking advantage of that square footage to pick up some additional classroom space upstairs. But for the most part, we're really looking at adding a lot of technology to this building. Currently, in this facility, the wireless doesn't work very well. You can imagine, we have some really thick clay tile walls and concrete, and it's, it's kind of a nightmare for wireless, so we're gonna be upgrading the technology, bringing in all new LED fixtures for lighting, really kind of giving them a fresh start, new carpet, new paint, all that kind of thing to really freshen up the facility. That's about it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments? Well, it looks good. Thank you very much for the update. I look forward to seeing it.
Last but not least is Los Montañas Charter High School Construction Project. This is a facility that the district obtained. It's the old Church on the Rock on Solano, which used to be also American Furniture Store. During this presentation, I have Steve Newby from Steve and Newby Architects.
Madam President, members of the board, my name is Steve Newby. Steve Newby Architects here in Los Cruces. And we're here to present today the design on what we hope is going to be a greatly improved facility for Los Montañas Charter High School. The existing building, as Gloria stated, was the old American Furniture Building. It was built back in about 1973, so it's a little older than me, just barely. About forty, forty-three years old. About stanza. And the school district purchased this back at end of last year, and it was a great purchase. The building is very sturdy as far as the shell goes. It's a concrete frame as well as steel structure. After 43 years, there is not a crack in the masonry. The remainder of the systems, though, are also 43 years old. The heating and cooling was original to the building. How it was still working is a mystery to all of us, but that will be replaced. And rather than units on the roof, those will be ground mount units that will be much easier to maintain. It will eliminate a lot of leaks that usually occur on roof-matted units. They will also be very energy-efficient units. The electrical also was quite old, does not comply with any of the codes any longer. There's no grounding system in the building, and the use is much different than when it was a furniture store. So that will be all-new electrical. The lighting, as Mr. Ali discussed, will be LED, which is the standard of the industry, much more efficient and certainly much more energy savings. The roof was, as far as we could tell, not original to the building, but it looked like it. It has though recently been refurbished, probably about another five years of leak-proof work was done on that. The building itself is about 32,000 square feet, and it's on three different levels. If you could skip to the, I think it's the third or fourth slide. Nope, yeah, there we go. This is a picture from inside, and you're looking from the south of the building towards the north, Solano. This is on the corner of Solano and Foster. Solano is to the left of the picture. And what you have here is you enter the building here on the ground level. That is first floor, about 5,000 square feet. There's a garage door here that goes out to a loading dock. You go up half a level, about six feet, to what we call the upper level, which is about 13,000 square feet. In like manner, you go down to the lower level, which is also about 13,000 square feet. The demolition on the interior took place over the last few months, and you can tell it's a great shell building to remodel because there's no interior bearing walls. We do have the concrete columns and steel structure, and again, the building's in great shape. On the site itself, the site will have about 50 parking spaces. One more. There you go. Site will have about 50 parking spaces. It has no handicapped accessibility now, and so all of the ADA units will be upgraded to make sure that we have good accessibility. There will also be outdoor courtyards, and if you look at the screen, there's about 4,200 square feet of overhang here in front of the building. That gives us great shade, which is very important here in the desert environment. And Gabe Lucero, our project manager, will show you how we're going to use that outdoor shaded area. With that, I'll have Gabe discuss the floor plans.
Thank you, Steve. Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Rounds. As Steve had mentioned on the site plan, I'm gonna go ahead and cover the floor plan. I think it's the next slide. For some reason, they're out of order. There you go. This is the ground level as you enter the building and the lower level, if you remember the photo that Steve had discussed. Do you have the pointer? So here's the admin area at the ground level. The main entrance is here. We have a student courtyard, dining courtyard that we'll be including in the project at the end. We'll have a student entrance, so we have a separate entrance to the commons area away from the visitors' area just to avoid some congestion. We've got our reception nurse area. We've got HR, vice principal and principal. We have a restroom addition that was required because, as Steve had mentioned, this was a church and a furniture store in the past. So now that it's a school, gonna be a school, we had to add a lot more plumbing fixtures. So we've got this guy going here, we believe, will be construction in about two or three weeks. Just so you understand what's what, the blue is all the educational areas. The green is the tear or the, the areas for the restroom, the kitchen, the pathways and the corridors, the service areas such as the data, electrical, storage rooms. Steve had mentioned that we were gonna have ground-mounted units, and we have some mechanical yards here. We had some structural members that were in the way of doing just one yard, so we had to split them up, and we're gonna do that. Makes it a little bit easier, save some money on some running the ducks. We've got a particular room that the district, the school wanted, was a workout room for their fitness program. Dean Robinson is very high on, on, on fitness, so we wanted to make sure we had a, a space for that. We tried to align all the different types of classrooms, math, English, science, social studies, next to each other. And some of them actually had labs, so they would be centered around the, the middle portion of each floor. If you go to the next slide, or the previous slide, I guess, in this order. This is the upper level. Again, if you remember that picture that Stephen mentioned, this was, you would walk upstairs. We've got our science lab. We've got some other science classrooms. We've got a library. One of the things that the school wanted to have was a library slash media center, multipurpose. And if they ever had training for their teachers or wanted to invite the community, they could have a little conference slash meeting in this area. We also have a teacher's lounge. And again, we've got classrooms along the corridor and then an art room, which is something that was also very important to the, to the school. We renovated, we're gonna renovate the existing restrooms, which have been demolished, to apply the code. We've got some drinking fountains away from the pathway of the corridors. And again, we're doing new stairs. If you remember that photo, the stairs are not to code currently. So in order to save some space down here in the admin area in the commons corridor, we went ahead and rotated these stairs so that way they'll apply the code and save some space 'cause this is all open right now. So we found an opportunity to go ahead and include that and to prevent wasted space. I believe that's all we have. The rendering was actually last, but if we can go back to the rendering. First slide. Okay. This is what it's gonna look like when it's completed. You'll have your restroom addition here. Here's our canopy, our existing canopy that we have now. We'll have our, our student dining courtyard, a faculty courtyard, and our main entrance will be right here. And I guess you wanted to touch on the schedule? Okay.
Thank you. If you could go to the schedule slide, please. The schedule, we started on this project back in December, and I'll just hit the highlights on this. One of the fortunate things that we have is to be working with ESA Construction. They were brought on board early this year. They've been instrumental, as an example. We had a project meeting today, and within, Gloria would say, about 30 minutes, we identified about $30,000 of door hardware that we could eliminate without affecting the function of the school. And that's the great thing about having a contractor onboard during design is we can do the value engineering while we're designing it rather than after effect. Also, the asbestos, a study was done, and the asbestos was abated, I believe, in February. As we said, the demolition took about a month. ESA went in and did a great job with demolishing it, and there was actually a savings also in the demolition from their original estimates. Also, as I mentioned, the roof has already been repaired. It is watertight. The mechanical units, the 43-year-old heating and cooling units have been removed, and they've gone to their maker, I hope, or perhaps to the recycled yard. Coming up next week, we will, I'm sorry, this week, actually Thursday, we will deliver the addition documents for permitting. ESA believes they will start that within about three weeks. And then in next week, we will deliver documents for the permit for the main remodel of about 26,000 square feet. ESA will start that work in June. Current completion date, down at the bottom, is move-in date of September 11th. There's a lot of asterisks on that that ESA reminds us about, about availability of materials, long-lead items, et cetera. We have tried to identify all of those and given them selections and specifications already on a number of those items, so those can already be ordered. And with that, Madam President, we will stand for any questions or comments.
Do you have ADA? Do you have a elevator so you can get to, to the different floors?
Madam President, board members. Yes, sir. There's an existing freight elevator that is, is very tempting to just refurbish because it's about 10 feet by 10 feet with some really cool old doors on it. However, it does not comply with ADA. It does not comply with safety concerns. That elevator will be replaced with a new lift that will be ADA compliant. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, it's most interesting. I don't have any questions, so thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And good luck. Okay, we are on to new business. We have none, old business none, and we are up to public input. I don't know if we have any today. Okay. Seeing that there is none, we'll move on to board reports. And I don't know if anyone has anything they'd like to say. I have a comment also for the end.
I have.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Mr. Frank, okay?
I have things that I can do.
Okay, good.
I went to the Loma Heights reopening. It's a beautiful, new, bright, colorful areas with all-purpose room to serve many, many uses. There were many people in attendance, including a former principal and the secretary, teachers, parents who had attended earlier. There was much enthusiasm for the new surroundings, and the presentations by the folkloric dancers were lovely. It was, it was fun to go and see what they'd done with that old building to make it look so, so really new. I went to the Hispanic poetry contest at Centennial, where 26 mid-school students, both native and non-native speakers, recited poetry in Spanish. They were judged on presentation, enthusiasm, accuracy, and poise. It was fun to see these kids doing what they had learned. The student scholarship recognition at dinner at Doniana Community College, since I serve on that board. Recognition for those who have given scholarship for the students at that institution was given. And two of the scholars spoke about how the scholarships have impacted their lives, helping each to succeed and become more able to support themselves and their families. The Celebration of Excellence Dinner was a big success and well-attended. A real pleasure to support our, our teachers and wish them well. It was quite lovely. Lots of people worked hard on it and made a real interesting evening. I went to the county government think tank on teen pregnancy and better educating students and helping them avoid problems related to their sexuality. I did not, they were making a, a video, and I did not have time to stay for all the presentation because I went to the Hispanic poetry contest. I went to the, to grad celebration of students the other night, those kids who have children and are now able to graduate because of the grads program. An overview of the year's activities was presented with a PowerPoint presentation, including a section of the graduating students' plans and hopes for their future. I believe 10 of those students will be graduating this spring. The Comcast Cares Day was a great roaring success at Hornada. The day was lovely, not like last year at Mecia when the wind blew. It was nice, and there were people working everywhere, green shirts for Comcast, too many to count. It was wonderfully organized, thanks to Bobby Stout, the principal teachers, Naida, Haynes, Bridget Zaglofer, and others. Almost all the LPAs, LP, LCPS Foundation Board members were present and participating and working hard, as were principals, APs, and parents from other buildings besides Hornada. The Hornada parents and students were there to show pride and to take, to make their school more attractive and appealing. I think all of the goals of the day were met, and it looked really, really nice. The Los Cruces Public Schools Foundation Board met on April 27th to discuss a new executive director as Naida is going to retire. There's a great need for someone with good people skills, grant application experience, and organizational abilities. The foundation has made big strides in professionalism and organization this year, and it really needs to continue so that we can support the district. The new teacher celebration was held on Monday, April 27th. There was a room full of, of new teachers, their mentors, principals, and assistant principals. As always, Jane Gurna and Pete Dinger have done a wonderful job of helping these new professionals become better teachers. I stopped by Valley View a couple of times to see students engaged in many and varying activities. They were focused and intent on their work. Teachers were facilitating learning in many ventures, in many venues, reading groups, small discussion groups, and one-on-one working with children. The DIAC meeting last night was a wrap-up of the year. Mr. Rounds talked about budget, not riffing teachers, finding ways to meet student needs, and thanking principals, teachers, and parents for their efforts in helping children. He reported the graduation grade was 77 percent. Yay! And shout-outs were given by principals for special events like science and academic awards in elementary schools and mid-schools. The mid-school robotic teams, who went to robotic, or to regional competitions and received rewards, and rewards to second graders for special reading abilities and, and growth. Plans were put in for next year at, at the DIAC meetings, and hopefully, it will be as well-attended next year as it has been this year. I missed the walk and ride-to-school walk this morning 'cause I misread the location and went to the wrong place in Mecia. So I'll try again to do the walk ride Thursday at Mecia Park.
I think she deserves a round of applause, don't you? You see, I was busy babysitting my grandsons and missed all of these events, so thank you for attending several of them. You, you did an incredible job. On this side, any comments or?
No, I just have a question about the DACC. When they presented the budget to you, what input had, did you have?
It looks very good. The nursing program looks to be coming along, and hopefully will be reinstated. The culinary arts program is, is moving along. They've hired some people. The budget looks good. They seem to be moving in the direction of submitting it to university.
My, my point was, what input did you guys have to the budget? Was it, I mean, you just accepted the budget as presented to you by?
We, yes. It was presented, and, and it looked very, very well-done and efficiently on task.
I would suggest that you have meetings up ahead of the time instead of being presented with a budget so that you can, we won't lose the interface between DACC and our schools, so. I would recommend that you do that.
Okay.
So that you have some input there, and they will understand the needs of the community as far as the schools are concerned.
I think they're looking hard at that and working on it.
Who, who's the president now?
Renee Scott.
Pardon?
Renee Scott. She's been there.
No, 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 the president of the advisory board.
Daniel Castillo from Gadsden.
Gadsden, oh, okay. Well, just make sure that they get the inputs from the three different school districts before they start doing their budget. As I see it now, they're, they're towards interfacing with the university and not particularly interfacing with the school system. with the school systems, so I'd like to look at that being recognized.
Mr. Davis, I had sent my regrets not being able to be there, and I sent that invitation to you.
Yes, and I sent you a reply that I was not able to make it because of a prior.
Okay, I just want to make sure you got it, and I need to go back and see.
In July, they're going to have a need for three members of each school board to be in attendance, and I believe it's June 4th.
I understand, yeah, that's for the bond.
Yes, and I will be out of town, so I'll need for somebody to pick up the slack for me, and...
Just remind me, and I'll probably go.
Well, I need three people from our board.
Oh, three people from our board?
Yes.
That's, they're going to take action on that.
Okay, I see. Mr. Castro, no?
I just have a quick comment to, actually, a statement to make in regards to the resolution on attendance, that we had all that happening at our last board meeting, and so I put together a statement. In regards to our resolution supporting teachers' contracted days, we will not rescind our resolution at this time. It is powerless for 2014, 2015, and the numbers were sent to the PED. I have found that we have support across the state and with legislators, so we will revisit this resolution for the following school year. The board is committed to honoring the negotiated contract. The language coming from the PED is so ambiguous, we feel that we do not need to step back at this time. Even in the newspaper today, today's article, it says about attendance, "Districts can decide how that information will be used," or "is used," to quote it correctly. So does this mean that we do not have to use attendance in the final analysis? I asked the superintendent to do a follow-up on what our scores would look like not using those attendance numbers and share them, not so much with us, but with the teachers and staff across the district as well as the community, because it may make a difference for some of our teachers. And those numbers, it's interesting, it's National Teachers Week, and those numbers came out this week, so I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But I feel that, and I've had some input from board members, and I don't know if any of you want to say anything in that regard. I know how Mr. Frank felt about it. He expressed himself very eloquently the last time. Does anyone else have anything to say on that, on not rescinding the resolution?
Personally, I feel very strongly about not rescinding.
Okay.
I'm same way.
Okay, so we have some agreement in that regard. And so that's what my statement, and the only other thing I needed to revisit, because next week we start with the honor assemblies, and I just wanted to make sure that someone was present at all of them. I have for Oñate on Monday at 6:00 PM. Mr. Frank will be there. On Tuesday at, pardon me?
There was a change to the Oñate Senior Awards. It's going to be held at the gym instead of the pack. We just received word on that.
Okay, the Mayfield High School gym?
No, Oñate.
Oñate.
Oh, Oñate.
It's a gym rather than the pack.
Oh, okay, okay, that's fine. All right, just send that to us, please, so I'll remember. On Tuesday, Mayfield High School, Maury, you said you would attend that one? And then, and it would be great if two of us can show up.
I'd go for sure to Mayfield.
Okay, all right, then, and then there's also the film program on that evening as well. The health films, the films that they, that's going to be at Oñate High School as well.
At the pack.
I'll send that to you again, so everyone can see it. On Wednesday, the 13th, we have Los Cruces High School, and Chuck and Barbara are down for that. And then my major conflict is on Thursday, the, I said I would go to Arrowhead Park Senior Awards, but I actually know the valedictorian is a family friend from Centennial High School, so I need to go to Centennial High School. They're both at the same time, so is there anyone that would like, you'll go to Arrowhead Park?
I'll go to Arrowhead Park.
Okay.
It's at 6:00 as well?
It's at 6:00 PM, same time. And actually, that's closer for me, but I'm going to go to Centennial instead. And then on Friday, we start with our graduations, Rio Grande Prep Institute, so it's an action-packed week for all of us.
Madam President, could I remind the board of events this week?
Okay.
So tomorrow at 4:30 is our LCPS retirement reception in this room.
I have 4:00 PM. Is it 4:30?
4:30, yes, ma'am. Then on May 7th, we have the Doniana Community College commencement.
Yes.
Where our own Joe Galván is receiving an honorary associate's degree from. But I'll remind you also there that we'll have our Arrowhead Park Early College High School graduates will be receiving their associate's degrees before they graduate from high school. And so that's a great event, and we have about 87 percent of our total graduates receiving an associate's degree, and it appears we will have a 100 percent graduation rate again this year. So we're very pleased about it. I would invite you to that.
Is that graduation at 7:00?
It is at 7:00.
At the East Mesa campus?
At the East Mesa campus, and there is a 5:00 PM reception at the Hubbard Room on the main campus, and that's the reception for Joe and other honorees.
Is that behind the Pan Am?
That's behind the Pan Am on the second floor. Madam President, where we usually suit up for our graduations.
And I'll be attending the DACC commencement as well, so, well, we have, they said they would put us on the days.
Well, Dr. Scott said the other night if we wanted to wear our regalia, we were welcome to do that.
Okay.
And we would have it available for you if you would like to wear it.
Yes.
And that's also the day of the Field of Dreams.
That is also the day of the car giveaway that is at 5:00.
Oh, my goodness.
4:00, 5:00. At 5:00, the Field of Dreams.
On the 7th?
On the 7th also. And then, Madam President, on the 8th, at 5:30 back in the boardroom, is our bilingual awards ceremony.
Okay.
Is that still correct? All righty, so Maury is, it would be very appreciative of your attendance to that.
So that's every evening.
That's every evening. And, Madam President, we have on the 9th, and you're invited to come by and visit, a National Federation Sports Physicals meeting at the AP Arrowhead Park Medical Academy, where the national president of the National Federation Sports Physicals will be there. Our program in Los Cruces is perhaps the top in the nation, and they're coming to see the facility and work with us on that, and you're certainly invited. It's from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday at Arrowhead Park Medical Academy. And then, Madam President, as you indicated, the next week gets a little crazier and moves out, and then the following week is graduation. And then there's Mother's Day. Those of you that fit that particular niche, I want to thank you first of all for that role you played and congratulate you on a Mother's Day coming on. It's a very special time. Unfortunately, my mother's passed, and so I'll remember her. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think if there's nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank, I don't need a motion, do I?
Madam President, a motion would be in order.
All right.
So moved.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We close the meeting. Thank you. Adjourned.